Nick Kirby Chair. I just want everyone in the room to know the recording has started. Alright, so I have 6:15. We will call the meeting. So everyone knows the meeting is being recorded. We have one board member attending remotely. So Julia, there's things I need to do when a board member is attending remotely. So what I'll need you to do, if you don't mind, is I need you to identify yourself, state your location, who is with you, with anyone, and the reason that you're attending remotely, please.
We need to unmute.
Yes, and you need to unmute.
There, is that better?
That's much better.
Julia Kilali, I am sitting in a 26 Longview Road in Avon, Connecticut, alone. I was unable to attend because I had business that required I be in Connecticut. I couldn't make it back at time for the meeting.
Awesome. Thank you, Julia. Alright, so. He said that we were recording. So, alright, so we have our minutes and stuff, but first, I kind of want to do something a little bit different because a lot of us have seen each other kind of in passing and running back and forth. And I just kind of wanted to check in and see, I mean, this sounds weird, but just how everybody is. So, I mean, Anne, like, how are you doing? Like, seriously?
Can you see my smile?
So, how are you? How are the people in your building? How is everybody holding up?
I think we, as we get closer and closer, there's a certain amount of anxiety that's building, but I think we have suffered, and I feel good about this, that we are working together better. I mean, really, in times of toil and trouble, you really need to rely on each other. So, I think we're okay.
Okay, good.
That's my answer, we're okay.
Alright. Joe, how are you? How are the people in your building? How's everybody holding?
I'm, I'm good. I'm hopeful and optimistic that things will go well. And I think, you know, we're able to do the social distancing and so the kids should be okay. And looking forward to seeing them, just like every summer. And, you know, it's hectic all the time, right before the start of the year, no matter how much you try and get going. Custodians have been fantastic with all the moves that we've had to do. And everyone's been really flexible. And I think, you know, the teachers are, of course, are a little anxious.
I don't blame them.
Our new people are settling in and completely overwhelmed, like always, so that's part of the course. So everything is kind of like it usually is before the start of the year, minus having a very serious virus to deal with.
Alright, okay, cool. Holly, Kat, how are you all doing? Are you holding up? Are you doing okay?
We're, we're working.
Okay.
Right, I mean.
Right, okay. Alright, cool. Now, who do we have? Tom on next. I want to see how the folks, how he's doing, and how the folks in the business office are doing.
We are very busy. Thank you for asking.
Alright. Is Dev on there? So how's, how's, how's Dev and everybody in Techland doing?
It's a little crazier than the normal crazy.
Okay.
You know, it's always crazy at this time of the year for us. It's two times that crazy, COVID crazy.
That's part of why I wanted to check in, because it is normally insane crazy, and we have this extra level of, yeah.
Yeah, anxiety.
Exactly, exactly.
Doing our best.
Awesome, thanks, Dev. Julie, how's everybody in your world doing? Julie Fenrich, Julie Fenrich, how's everybody in Spedworld doing?
We're doing fine. We're working hard. We've got tons and tons and tons of meetings to do. More than usual, but we're plugging along.
Alright, awesome. Anne, I'm not going to forget you, and I know you've been working with Jan and Elise, so how's, how are you folks doing? Aside from, again, being so stressed out.
Overwhelmed, but we'll get there. We always do. Just adds another whole layer of things that we have to make sure that get done.
Awesome. Wayne, I talked to a lot, you know, so, but, but yes, Wayne, how are you?
So I am optimistic, more so the last few days than I was last week. Past teacher in the hall yesterday, I said, are you getting ready for, you know, I have kids in the room? So I can't wait to see my kids. With passion, that it was encouraging that we have that kind of enthusiasm around making this work. So, most people could wait right now, because, you know, there's still some things that were working out. But I think they're confident that they will be ready on September 8.
Awesome. And we had the new teacher stuff on Monday, on Tuesday, Tuesday, Monday was the other day, Tuesday. And it seemed like everybody was kind of ready to go and in good spirits and, you know, looking forward to starting. So unless I, unless I misread the pavilion.
No, I, I think that people are adjusting to what it means to teach during this period. But I also think that people realize that.
Alright, thank you all for doing this. Alright, so we've got a whole big group of meetings here, so you guys want to get them individually, or do you want to handle them all together, or what do you guys need to do?
I would say handle them collectively.
Alright. And I will entertain the motion on the slated minutes.
Make them look, fix up all the minutes listed on the.
Alright, super motion in a second to accept the, the slated minutes here and discussion. I just got a few typos here and there, but I can send those in, because there's nothing in content. And it's just, you know, a few little bits here and there, so if that's okay for you guys. Anybody have anything else? Okay, so then I, let's see, all those paper of approving this, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. And Julia, you were.
Aye.
Alright, Julia's an aye. Alright, so that is. Alright, I want to get into the update on the school information committee. Who wants to start with that? I guess one. Alright, so.
Why did I jump right in?
Yeah, I got the, I got the notice, unfortunately, as, after I had left for Maine last week. So I wasn't able to provide a written report. But basically, as I mentioned in my first paragraph there, we're using our checklist that was in the document, the steering committee document, kind of going through, making sure that each of those points are covered. And also focusing in on the, well, right now, what we can focus in on is three of the four areas that the board had requested to focus in on, the screening aspect. And we did, and as Anne has mentioned, we did look into a program that would interface with Power School. It's called SNAP. It would allow us to be able to survey, parents would fill it out in the morning, or once a week, and answer the COVID questions, the screenings that we want. And that way, we'd have a list of people that did, and list of people that did not do so. It's not overly expensive. It's going to probably be in the neighborhood of $300, added on to the software that we already have. It's an additional cost, 50 cents per student. It could also be used for staff, but I don't know, we haven't had that chance to discuss using it for staff as well. And then what would happen in terms of screening at the elementary school is, we're dropping off and back the buses this year. The bus company came down during the summer, and they could make the turning radius. So we'll have a para and a backup para out in that area to take temperatures of each child on the bus before they depart. And should there be a situation where a child on the bus has a fever, then the entire group would go to the gym for the period until the nurse could evaluate the situation better. The walkers and car riders would be tested along school street. So we have asked the K-12 parents and preschool parents to park at the north side and wait at their cars, and we do the temperature checks there, so that if they did have a temperature, the parent would, you know, immediately just have to make some new arrangements and take them home. 3, 4, 5 will be on the south side toward the gym, and we have paras there also taking temperatures. They'll all be trained, I can't remember if it's on September 2nd or September 3rd, when the paraprofessionals are coming for PD Day. I think it's the 3rd. They'll all be trained on the right way to do it, make sure they're comfortable with it, and understand that, you know, they don't make the assessment. They would have radios and let the nurse know that we have, you know, a situation that has to kind of be addressed right away, which brings me to the isolation room. We'll have an isolation room directly across from the nurses stationed downstairs. It's going to impact preschool, or preschool will have to more or less be in the one room again. As long as we don't have any isolation cases, we can use that room for a couple of pre-students, if we have enough space to do that. But the main focus around that room would be, you know, to be available when we need it for isolation. It's really right there, so it's helpful to have it so close proximity. Let me remember the other. Let's see. The bus, the bus company has come up with a plan, and I think it's similar to plans that other companies have done that I've seen, where they're going to be seated in the window seats. They're going to be using each seat. You know, we really don't know exactly how many children will be on the bus. But we're going to have the cameras there, and we'll prepare a waiver that's going to go home in the district package that says, I understand, we're in a different kind of situation here, and if that students are taking their masks off, if they're not practicing social distancing, then they're going to have to ride, ride a car to school and not be able to use the bus anymore. Bus company will have three cameras, as you see in the bus contract, there's going to be three cameras available, so we'll have really good visibility on things. That will take away any of the question marks around whether or not it was actually out of their seat, or the mask was off, rather than have to worry about having a monitor on it. I know there were four points. One of them was the every other week report, but I can't remember the other specific question. Do you remember that last one? Yeah, I think it was the lunch in the classroom. So in the meals, you know, staff will follow hand, hand, hand hiding guidelines. Custodians are going to remove the trash promptly from the areas. We'll explore some opportunities to eat outside if it's feasible, you know, and not too much extra time of moving around. The meal delivery is going to be coordinated with the Abby group. Abby can't enter the rooms. Each staff member today, we got an email about the, some training for safe service of food, and each staff member will be participating in that throughout the course of the year. They don't have to finish it right away, but they'll be doing that. And then we're also moving to a digital ordering system for lunch and breakfast, rather than our paper forms. So while teachers are doing attendance first thing in the morning, they'll be collecting the orders for lunchtime, and the next day's breakfast, and they'll send that on to the kitchen staff. So we have that without worrying about the paper. You know, Sean and I, the facilities manager, we've been working on the cleaning schedule since the time he came on board. And there's a mid-morning wipe down of all the common areas throughout the building. Special rooms, the specials, the art, the music, and the phys ed, and the gym will be spaced apart, so there's time in between for cleaning. And then using our neat machine, the 360 machine, that does probably the most efficient cleaner and best cleaner. It's going to be a group sort of effort to keep everything clean. The teachers will be responsible for surfaces within the classroom, the desks, pencil sharpener, you know, phone, computer keyboards, and the custodians will handle, like, in the elementary school, as you know, we have some bathrooms. So the custodians will handle all those private bathrooms with the fixtures and that kind of thing. They'll handle all the common handrails and so on. We'll have a lot of signage up. Brenda's been feverishly making signs regarding all aspects of, you know, the safety precautions, physical distancing, cover your cough, your sneeze, wash your hands, keep, one of those, up and downstairs and that kind of thing. Mr. Fecto's been looking at some recess ideas. We're going to have designated spot for each goal heart, which is, it can be a little bit of a challenge, but I think we're going to be okay. The specials are also presenting a little bit of a problem in that, you know, to try not to expose the specialists, like phys ed, music, and art to a whole bunch of kids, 280 or upwards, we've turned it into that they see a group for a month. And staffing the other specials, because usually we need at least three others special, we need three specials going on at a time, in order for the teachers to have their planning period. So that's been a little bit of a challenge, but I'm confident that our operations group will be able to work through some of that. The remote learning is, is growing. We had only, when I wrote my report before I left for Maine, we had 13, and now we're up to either 32 or 33. I can't remember if I counted the last one in. So I figured out that's approximately 10% of our student. We're working on finding, Mrs. Benrich is working on finding things for the, and staffing for the competency training education that'll take place after school. Arrival, like I mentioned, is pretty good. Dismissal is a challenge. We're, I think we're going to need to stagger our end time and have our walkers of the youngest grades be dismissed a little bit earlier, and we might be able to adjust as the year goes on and get a little better at it. But I do believe that we're going to need to start sending the kindergarten and first grade walkers and car riders at 3:05. And then the third, the fifth graders at 3:10, and the bus groups at 3:15. Because the bus company wants kids in a certain order. They want the, the first kids off to be the last kids on. You know, we board the bus to go home. So we have to get all those things in order and get them out there in the right fashion. Been working hard to get HASP in place. We're thinking, Mary Ann and I are working together to try, as a goal, to have at least 50% of, like, last year's participation. The AM program was around 70. We're shooting for like 35-ish, if we can get there. PM program, there was probably about 100, so if we can get to 50 or 60 kids in that timeframe, then we will. We're probably not going to, we won't start HASP until, what's that, the 14th? So we'll have time to get all the permissions and signups in place. And it'll have to be a little different. Kids won't be able to travel from one program area to the other. There'll be themed rooms that Ms. Mahoney and Mrs. O'Malley are working on to plan out. We'll use the art room, the music room, cafeteria, the library, the gymnasium, and the tech lab. And, you know, that will be cleaned afterwards between 6:00 and 9:00 by the, by the custodians. The other big thing is, I would like to propose half-day kindergarten. The kindergarten teachers met, and what they plan on doing in the end, it's half-day, but it's also a remote portion. They met and they, during the school time, they'll be doing math, reading, foundations, integrity. It's a language-based skill. And then when they go remote, there'll be a math follow-up, a reading follow-up, some basic writing, you know, in their case, letter formation early on. And then some science and social studies things, you know, just to look at, like, look at the moon, the phases of the moons, and that kind of thing. They'll perform like daily check-ins as much as possible on the remote progress when they're at home. And they cited some challenges as getting information to parents about half-day, the arrival and dismissal logistics, and staffing, I think we've worked that out. And a concern around, every year, kindergarten assesses kids the first three days of school. So the remote learners, it's not like the half-day kids that are, and then the kids that go home in like a hybrid format, but it's those kids that are remote. I think we have maybe five or six kindergarten students that are remote. Very difficult to assess them without being in person, so we're trying to identify methods to be able to do that. The last thing is, we talked briefly today at the administrative level in the elementary school. Kat wasn't part of this conversation, but a big concern around bodily fluids and the response to that. Some of the kids, the youngest kids are not 100% ready to be there and will react differently to situations than you would tend to expect. And I am leaning towards a zero tolerance policy, where students intentionally spit on staff member or another student, that we would tell them that they have to go remote. In terms of close physical contact, when students become aggressive in a situation, I think that we don't need to be a zero tolerance policy, because we need to teach that skill to them. But I do think that we have to be very clear that continued close physical contact would also result in going to a remote setting. It's just not something that I feel comfortable that staff members are going to be safe when there's bodily fluids and a lot of close physical contact. So I just wanted the board to know that that was my position, and that goes for all kids, you know. Whoever it is, it has to be understood. And I'd like to make sure that that, with the board's mission, I'd like to make sure that that's clear to parents when they communicate, when I communicate with them in some form, letter, website, or whatever. That's pretty much like the whole thing that we've been going through. Does anyone have any questions for Joe? Really?
So I was wondering about, so I know early on, we had discussed spacing, and you had managed to get, I think you said, seven feet between the children in most classrooms. So I was just kind of checking in with that, because I know, logistically, once you start, you know, furniture and everything, is that still the case, and what the numbers for each class were looking like? Are we trying to keep it to 10, or?
No, it's, we're, we're basically, except for fifth grade, where there's 22 or 23 in each classroom, they're divided into two groups of 12 and 11, or 12 and 10, upstairs in the third floor. And then the rest of the classrooms, we did have quite a few enrollments in fourth grade, but we also had a few remote choices in fourth grade. So we're, I didn't get a chance to walk around at the end of the day, but we have been able to set them up so they're six feet apart. In every room that I was in, the only room I haven't been in is the new fourth grade room, which is room 245. Some people might refer to it as the old library. So that was populated with desks during the day, but I just didn't have time to check back in. The third grade classrooms are fine with spacing. They're all spaced out. The second grade classrooms are spaced out, in good shape. First grade kindergarten have plenty of room. So, so the physical distancing has been, it's worked out. It's, and the special ed rooms also are, look like they're going to be okay. The population of those rooms is not as big. It's sometimes eight at once in a room. So I think that part's okay.
So, and I, this kind of goes for both buildings, but, so what is the policy going to be if people are six feet apart? Are they taking masks off, or is it both masks and six feet?
Masks and six feet, and what, you know, there may be times when staff have to be closer than six feet, but I'm not going to say children are going to be closer than six feet. They need to remain in their seat. That's another aspect of the kindergarten. Those, expect them to be there for six hours and not get in each other's space. It's going to be really hard. It's going to be hard enough for three hours.
And also, we had talked about scheduled math breaks throughout the day, so has that been?
So we discussed that at our meeting. We had a meeting on August. And we discussed that very heavily. And we're going, if we're going to identify spots, just like with the recess spots, they'll have the same spots for their math breaks, and they'll be outside. The feeling is that if we open up, like, okay, yeah, Joe, go ahead, go sit in the corner and take your mask off. We're going to have a revolving door, so we're going to build the stamina, you know, we're going to, like, when classrooms being sustained silent reading, first day, then you say, you know, well, let's try and do it for 12 minutes. Let's try and do it for 15, let's build it up. So we're going to stay, you know, we're not going to say we're building up. We're going to say our goal is, until snack time, 10:30, you know, they're staying off. And then you're going to get recessed, and then lunch, get a break in the afternoon, or depending on what snack is. Vice versa, have a break in the morning. Use that particular space that's designated to that. I think the more you, if you go here, I think that's when you're going to get, you know, you're going to get the kids there. Well, most of that age are not going to be non-armed.
Right. And hopefully, by now, most of them have had to, you know, getting used to it, you know, bringing my kids and mountains heavy to try and get used to it, because it has been a while, so hopefully everyone's onward. So mine is more about remote learning and logistics, so I pulled off on that.
Yeah. So we had a discussion about the changing of decisions. We, do we have a firm idea of if a parent wants a student, you know, either go out on remote or come back in? Is it only going to be per quarter?
Well, that's, that's what I was going by, yeah. Then, you know, once they, like, once they start out this particular first quarter, that they wouldn't. I mean, part of what we're doing is setting up the room so that they have that physical distancing, and that would be, that's a problem when they would have dropped back in the quarter.
And what about, like, lunch, if, can you go ahead and say?
Yeah, so they'll get, the ones coming in, the lunch will be there for them, and the ones going out, if chosen, they'll be able to take them with that.
Let's talk a little bit on the. We talked about, you know, first order, and I could be, we'll read on that, if we all said that. It was also the, if you, if you were floundering, it's something we definitely said we could be made. But we're going to try to keep it.
Well, part of our remote plan originally was that if we see somebody having a hard time remote, we would, unless the governor says, nobody comes to school, like, in that little window at the beginning, we're like, put it up. But then it was like, if you wanted to have small groups coming, you could, and middle school did do that, yeah. But if we saw kids floundering, and they're remote, then. Then you'd want to pull them in. And that's one of the things that I want to talk about Friday night with families, is, you know, that that opportunity is there to come in dressed for help, but we won't have a spot for them in the room. is there to come in dressed for help, but we won't have a spot for them in the room. And I seem to recall something that it's, it would be easier for you guys if there was an in-person student who didn't want to go remote versus the other way around, if that's still the case? That's my feeling.
I, I think it depends on the maturity of the individual.
Julia, did you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you. I thought it was very well thought out, thank you, Joe. Sean, you're really muffled, it's hard to hear you.
Sorry, I'll take my little raincoat off, is that any better?
Much better, thank you.
All right, awesome, thank you. All right, did anyone have anything else for Joe? Ready for Mr. Pretag on the hot seat?
All right, would you like me to go in the orders that I sort of laid out before? Would that help?
Sure.
Okay. And I will say, I have to thank everybody who's been coming to these meetings, I listened to the people who were attending, we met August 10th, we met August 17th, we're going to meet again next Monday because things change, all right? So the first area that we looked at was counseling and guidance. Feeling about math testing has not changed, we still think this is our universal benchmark assessment, and we'd like to do it. When we have our meetings with remote parents, we're going to explain how it can be done because they can do it at home too. But this will give us an idea where those, those lagging skills are that we're going to need to really help kids develop. So we are concerned about what was the quality of learning during the remote time, so we'd like to do the math testing. And when the teachers have asked that we extend it through grade 12, it is norm through grade 12, so we'll just do the English, reading, and the math. So there will be two areas for math testing.
Through grade 12?
Yes. So 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, call. They won't all do it on the same day. I keep hearing the word broadband. So they won't all do it on the same day. I hear that from people on the committee. So, grade six orientation, tentatively now is scheduled for September 3rd, that evening. We would like to have one parent come in with a child, so they get to walk around the building, meet some of the teachers, the core content teachers, and we will probably have small groups so they can meet them. September 3rd, that evening. We've spent a lot of time this summer working with Eric Meehan on the social emotional learning curriculum and the multi-tiered system of support. So these are key areas that we want to go over during the two workshop days, and we do have staff, we want to talk about what it means to be a well-regulated adult, aware of our own anxiety, how to establish the core values, and we've talked about things related to getting ready, thinking, handling your own anxieties so that you're, you're ready to learn, and building those staff connections with the students. So we want to spend more time on that, that's, that's the area. And we're planning to do that during that half-hour window of advisory in the morning each day. In addition to that, we'll probably be doing the digital breakfast and lunch ordering, so that those lunches, you know, who's getting what, you know, who's getting breakfast the following day, so that'll be part of that first half-hour each day. So, physical space. Sean Lee and Sean Robinson assessed every room in the building. We did set up three classrooms tonight, if you want to see what it looks like with six feet, and three feet, three feet looks abysmal, six feet almost looks too far, but most of our class sizes now are 10 to 13 kids, which we're feeling really comfortable about, and that's in fact, I think, to some of the remote learners. So we're feeling comfortable with those numbers. We're asking teachers to remove any clutter in the room, and we're also asking, when we talk to parents or get them, message out to parents that when a student brings in their backpacks, let's minimize what they're bringing, they don't need to bring their toys, but they need to have their personal writing utensils and notebook. So one of the things that we can do is reduce clutter in school, because we're going to not use the lockers, we want kids to take the backpack with them and have it by their side when they're in the classroom. We talked about travel in the building, Mr. Lee feels our hallways are wide enough since we're not going to be using the lockers, we have two-way traffic, pass on the right side of the hallway like a car. The west stairwell will be for going up, and the east stairwell will be for going down. So the east one is by art, and the west one is by the front office. So we'll have limited traffic on stairwells. We're looking at, we have a map here for our entry, for the buses, for kids who drive or walk, and for parent drop-off. And I actually think the traffic flow is better, because now parents, if we have them drop off at the gym, they're not going to be competing with the buses to drop off in front of the front lobby. Our feeling about the buses is that we would like to have a bus monitor, check temperatures before kids get on the bus. High school kids are a little bit, they will test the waters, I think, in order to ensure that they sit down, keep their mask on, and stay by the windows and the seating on the bus, but if we can check temperatures before we get on the bus, that will reduce the contact. If somebody gets on the bus with fever, we've talked a little bit about that, how do they go into contact tracing, and how long were they on the bus together? Some of our bus rides are kind of long, 30, you know, not 30 minutes, but 20 anyway, so that's consideration for health and safety screenings. So, you ready to keep moving on?
Sure.
Okay. So, we talked about those entry-level health and screenings, the three drop-off points. Jan did share with us the information that Elise had about the SNAP and the QR codes to help facilitate information for parents, get the information from them about, have you traveled, what are your illnesses, mask requirements, we're expecting students to wear them all day. We had very good luck this summer with the kids who came and finished remote learning, nobody challenged it. And the kids who did have some sensory issues, they started with a face mask, and then they moved to the box. So I think we can handle that. Classroom cleaning, we're going to have wipes in every room and ask the student, and these are older students, these are not young kids, I don't think they're going to try to eat the wipes, but some of those wipes are safe for older children, just to wipe their area before they leave, so it's clean for the next student. Backpacks, laptops, personal items will not be shared. There is a reopening plan from the librarian attached, very detailed, and I think she's talking about using a lot of digital resources instead of books. We do have the UV light, so if somebody does take out a book and return it, we'll sanitize it with UV lights. Building access, ideally, we would like students to enter the building at 7:30, so we don't have a large congregation in the cafeteria. They would report immediately to their advisory classroom, and those are about nine students with a teacher. Some of them are smaller. Staff coverage is going to be critical for us, especially during the lunches. We will have one class each period eat in the cafeteria, the others will go to classrooms. So the middle school students will be using three rooms each lunch period, probably in the middle school wing, the high school will use either the science and math wings, so all meals will be on the first floor, and each lunch will be split up into small groups. We do have two points of sale, we spent a lot of time talking with Mrs. Wojcik and Depp Tibouko about points of sale, because many of our students pay for their own meals, and we didn't want staff handling money. So the students will be taken to the lunchroom or the stage, the secondary point of sale, to get their lunch and then carry it themselves back to their lunchroom. So it sounds like a lot of moving around, but kids need to move, so we're, I think we can handle it. Pass, Marian has worked with us, and we have a volunteer, Kathy Venice is going to help her with the morning program. And so Katie Leonard and Kathy Venice will be in the gym in the mornings, so students can enter at 7:00, some kind of morning program with them in the gym. So we'll see how many students sign up for that, but I'm relieved that they can do that. Marian has said that she would like to target academic areas first, so if they're going to do support after school, again, we need the map data, what are the academic areas that we need to address with kids. I think last week we went over a lot of the athletic considerations, so we're going to follow some of those same protocols in the phys ed classes. And again, we do not want outside agencies using the gymnasium or other facilities, so like AAU basketball, or people using the fitness room, but we don't want that. I think I went over meals, and now we come to remote learning. We have spent a lot of time, oh, in your pack up, just, I just wanted to point out what a good job we're doing with documenting daily cleaning. I think this is important to document it, and I think Mr. Elise come up with some very good protocols for his staff. Maybe, as Joe mentioned, they've been working really hard, so doing a good job. All right, remote learning, what we have here is the expectation, I'll just pass this if you want, sorry, my hand went on. We have an expectation for what people would do if they have the internet or if they don't have internet. And Friday night, we will plan a Zoom meeting, Karen Thompson, Joe, myself, and Sean Robinson are going to connect with about, I don't know, probably 70 parents at this point, because I think I'm up to about 40 kids. We estimated 20%, we're very close to that right now. Even today, my parents are calling and asking questions, you know, my daughter has high anxiety, if she comes in and starts, does she have to continue for the whole marking order? Well, somebody with that kind of a medical diagnosis, that's not for me to say. If you have anxiety and try it and it's really too hard, then I think we have to have that kind of flexibility. So anyway, these are the guidelines that we've come up with so far. And what we want to do is a training with the parents, we'll start with one Friday, we'll probably have another one next week, and maybe another one the following week. But we want students to be able to log into Office 365 to each class. Now, we can do this provided everybody in the district is not logging into Office 365 and live streaming at the same time. I checked with the Director of Technology, and I checked with our Internet Administrator, Peter, and he said that if everybody, 600 people were trying to livestream at the same time, we'd saturate our broadband, we couldn't do it. We've never done anything like that, and I don't think we will, but that's the issue. So if I'm in this room now, and I'm livestreaming to a student at home, and that student's using their internet, it's not going to be a problem. But if everybody on campus, if you all are on your computer now, livestreaming with me, we might have a problem. Does that make sense?
It does, but, but we run a whole bunch of classes at the same time, and then a whole bunch of students.
But not everybody is, got their computer open, livestreaming at the same time.
So if teachers can livestream, as long as all the students aren't also on their laptop?
All 600 kids in our district are not open at the same time.
So we have students in the, in the classroom, they don't, they're not going to be, they're watching, they're watching the teacher right there, so they don't need to be on their laptop.
Exactly, right.
So, the students that are, that are basically in class, they're not using the broadband, it's the students at home, okay, so then that number, you're talking about 40.
Right, so I think we're okay. And it is a challenge for me to understand this, because I am not a millennial, I may be 1,000 years old, but I'm not a millennial. I was joking, sorry. Yeah, so I had trouble with this too, because we're saying, well, what if we need to livestream? Yes, we can, but not everybody in the room will be on their computer doing, even school, it'll be the kids at home using their own internet.
What about kids who are in the classroom?
It'll be fine, because again, we're not talking about 600 students, we're talking about being 10 kids in another room, and we're streaming to them.
Okay, because the way you wrote it in your report, I had a little concern that we kind of, that's the main piece of our plan, is accountability, login, and, so, just to be very clear, so, teachers still will be expected to livestream themselves out, totally be expected to livestream themselves out to kids at home?
Yes.
Kids and kids in the ancillary loads of classes, when that happens, you know, that might happen in many of these classes that we did, because there's more people in the remote.
Exactly.
Okay, so, all right.
Right.
So, you know, we did have some, I know, you know, we had a bunch of questions from Matt up, and some questions about, just the things like we would have to, one of them, he suggested was, I don't know if it's going to be shared with you or not, I know we didn't really talk about it, again, after our meeting with Matt, that, like, the code of conduct and stuff should be sort of updated, that kids know, you're not, you're recording teachers, you're not putting stuff on the internet.
Right.
We need to know who else is in your room watching with you here, your sibling, your parent, your friend, you know, so there's no shenanigans going on.
Right, yeah, right, and it's.
And if they can't comply to that, Matt said, you know, you have to have something placed, all right, then you're coming in, or whatever, you know.
Glad you brought that up, that's a good point, I'll add that, because this is a draft, right here.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So.
There's stuff like, you know, you would never think of, but you look at other places around, and what people are saying, and yeah.
Yeah, and if you have kids at home, you're probably going to think of things that we don't think of here, it's cool.
Oh, wow, absolutely, yeah.
So anyhow, so we have two, two areas, and we still know that we have kids who have no internet that are choosing to be remote for health reasons, someone in the family is compromised. So we're asking them to log into the class on time each day. We have a draft form that Karen is working on to have a, like, personalized learning plan, so that they'll know what class, what time, and when they should be logging in. And we're going to stress that we need to take attendance. If you do not log in, we're going to assume you were absent, and if you were absent, we want the note with the acceptable reason, because we're going to have to report that. And the other criterion that we looked at was getting the work done in a timely manner. We all have deadlines in life, and I think we, I mean, even last week, I was accepting work from kids who had been remote. So we don't want to do that again, that's an awful burden on the teachers, and it's not really teaching the kids a lot of responsibility. And then we want virtual meetings with a teacher or with Karen Thompson at least once a week. I can arrange individual peer-to-peer, we've thought about the library itself, you know, how there's that back door, very private access, so if I want to come into school and meet with my math teacher, because I'm struggling, we can clean the area, they can come in, limited access to everybody in the building, get help right there, and then leave out that door as well. So we can set that up at a pre-appointed time. So I think we've been very flexible, support kids. And the same thing, if they do not have internet, we're talking about packets of work that can be picked up and returned in a scheduled way. And again, if you can't attend to school on the day, we want, we're going to rely on a person's honesty, were you sick that day, let us know on the days that you couldn't work, if you were sick, we'll keep track of attendance. It's much harder to do if you don't have internet. So that's a draft, and I think we're making good progress with the remote learning expectations. And I do, I do apologize for messing up the thing about broadband.
I was really worried about that. I was wigging out a little bit.
These are my notes from the meeting, and they said, full synchronous learning, and that means everybody, I should say, everybody on campus can't do it at once, sorry. We do have some information here on communication, and I, I don't know if you want to look through that list, but we want to get these remote learning expectations out there, expectations for the care of the laptops, 6 through 12, we're going to ask them to take it home each night and bring it back each day, hopefully charged, in case. We'll go over the cleaning protocols, so these are the things we want to go over, but we're especially concerned about quarantining of students. We do have the primary isolation room, which is one of the, the rooms in the nurse's office is a separate room, there will be cots and shields in there, so you can, separate kids, and the secondary isolation room will be what is currently called the school suspension room, so we'll have cots in there and the same thing, because there's a bathroom. What I would like to add to this is open campus for all seniors this year, instead of just second semester all year. If we could do that, I think that would be helpful. And again, I think it's the maturity level of our seniors that we're looking at, I think for them to take responsibility, I think it's an important step, and it would help us. I'd have fewer kids in study hall, instead of 24 kids, maybe I'd have 20 or 18.
Jan?
Karen Thompson would like to ask a question.
Please.
I don't know if she heard you.
Well, I'm talking right into the mic, so I mean.
Karen Thompson, do you have a question?
I said Karen Thompson, you said please.
Please, go ahead, Karen Thompson.
Hi, thank you for letting me ask a question. I'm just curious, the remote learning calls just keep on coming, and that's fine, just since Joe talked, we, I just added three more kids to the list. So I don't know if we, if you are putting a timeline on when do we have, when do we say, if you, you need to let us know if you're remote or not by a certain date, or is that an open-ended? when do we have, when do we say, if you, you need to let us know if you're remote or not by a certain date or is that an open-ended?
I think if I'm not mistaken, that original date has already passed, but I think
It has already passed indeed, yes.
I think that we need to be open to it, because I mean, there's parents who just don't know and we haven't really we've been putting out the information as best we can, but you know, we're getting a lot of information that we need to put out tonight, so it's hard for parents to make decisions when we haven't been putting out enough information. So hopefully now that we're nailing down some stuff, we can put some more information out, you know, like now. And I was gonna ask if, you know, Joe and Anne, if, if when you start getting these expectations nailed down, these different things and these different protocols and such, if you could let me and Kayla know because then we can help with that information out there too.
Right.
Um, so I think that we do need to have a deadline, I just think that the deadline that we had, which has already passed, wasn't realistic because we didn't we weren't giving people enough information to make the decision. Um, so, I don't know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions as far as what we do for a, a date, Kayla?
So I think now that we do have some stuff figured out, we need to send mail home with here are the options, here's what each option will look like, the expectation for learning remotely. So our parents are making informed decisions and, you know, here's what the classroom, what life in school will be like. You know, do you feel like that's, you know, plausible for your child? And then put a date, once it has gone out in the mail to every parent, then we know people have the information they need because not everyone is online, not everyone is on Facebook. So I think we need to get physical mail to all families and then set a deadline of, you know, soon, but I don't know what realistic.
So, you know, in, um, in the communication, the draft communication plan that we're proposing, um, that we'll talk about in a little bit. Um, you know, there's categories and information and whatever category falls in, it goes out in these different platforms. I think what you're saying and I completely agree is that because there's a lot of information that we're just now putting together or able to put down into written form, that's one of those categories that goes out on all platforms. It goes out to email, it goes out to snail mail, it goes out with a call, it goes out on the social media, uh, website. That, that would be one that I would think would go out on all platforms. I mean, you guys agree with that?
Yeah, agree.
Right, I was just gonna ask you to
No, I think that, and I think we can get something put together fairly quickly, uh, once we get all the pieces, information.
Alright, um, yeah, so I mean, Anne and Joe, how do you, how comfortable are you with getting some of this in a written form that you can get to us that we can, you know, get out there and then we can start turning into correspondence and stuff like that?
We could, I could have something for you Friday.
Okay.
And I'm, you know, we say we want mail it on Monday, mail it Monday.
I think that would be fine, right?
And, and to be honest with you, I mean, Karen, I know it's been a lot of, I think the problem is they, they got inundated with um, emails and phone calls.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think there's gonna be a better way to streamline the communication back from parents, that what, we didn't expect this, did we Karen?
No, I, we did not expect it, but we're handling it, but it's just, it was a little more than we had anticipated, I think.
Okay.
So how would you prefer that we handle incoming responses?
Well, what's, well, I mean, Karen, if you're fielding them, what's, well, how, what is gonna work for you?
Um, well, I'm figuring out a system, um, and right now people are mostly emailing me because that's what went out was my email and a phone number. Um, that for me, or some of people are emailing Kathy Johnson, um, and then she's forwarding it to me, so I am emailing and, um, tonight I just put out a, uh, the Zoom call meeting, I sent out the wrong date to eighty parents first time around, so I had to send an apology.
Yeah, yeah, I, I saw that, that's all.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that was my first beg for forgiveness email, so, uh, there might be, there'll be more, I'm sure, but the parents have been, the parents have been amazingly wonderful and grateful and very kind to this process, so I, I just think that, um, as the numbers grow, uh, it's gonna become a little harder to manage, you know, we're pushing seventy-five students right now, uh, and that's gonna mean a lot of communication if we wanna do this with fidelity and really do it well, which is what we need to do, so I just put that out there because I think the, the numbers are growing and I don't know if I have a better idea of how to streamline the calls, but calls need, uh, emails are probably the better way. Uh, if there's any way we can let parents know that when they email me, to let them know who their child is and what, uh, the names are often different and I don't know family names the way Joe and Anna do, so if they could, if there's any way we can let them know when they send me an email to put in who their child's name is and what school that child's in, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Like naming grade level?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yes, that would be very, very helpful to me.
Okay.
I know, I got the high school kids down and in the last twenty-four hours I've learned quite a few elementary kids, but I just haven't got them all yet, so that, that's been a little bit tricky and oftentimes they have kids in both schools and I don't know that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and Joan, is, is Friday at all work for you or is that
Well, I'm just unclear about like what options, like Kayla, you referenced options.
Just the remote and in-person, so if you're sending in-person, here's what the school day is going, the expectations of the school day, like the mask wearing and zero tolerance with spitting and I think including that, you know, if the physical distancing is a repeated issue, your child will be asked to go remote. So just kind of laying it all out, this is the expectation for each, make your informed decision.
Gosh, and we need to be very clear, you know, as far as if, you know, someone chooses either in-person or remote that we really wanna stick to that quarter, you know, in my, in our building, in your building, if someone is, you know, gonna come in, they're probably not gonna be in that room, they're gonna be in a different room. We just need to make some of these, uh, details very clear, um, so that people know what they're choosing.
And, and remote learning is going to be different in the elementary school, so the expectations will be slightly different.
Right, so, so we need to spell that out per building, especially for, uh, for parents that may have, you know, kids in each building, it's gonna be different.
It'll be teams, but it won't necessarily be synchronous.
Yeah, we just, like I said, we just need to really spell that out for both buildings.
Okay, um, I was just thinking, and I don't know if you wanna follow this kind of format or put this in again so parents can have, but this really great, um, reopening plan summary that Julia did, I think it really gives a good summary and you can like maybe use that to kind of incorporate or somehow, or maybe also send it along too with the stuff you're gonna send.
Yeah, I was, excuse me, can I say, hello?
Absolutely, go ahead, yep.
I was gonna say to both Anne and Joe, the best way, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, uh, it will probably be presented uh, as a bullet point like the summary was, we wanna make it very succinct and to the point and easy to read so nothing gets lost. So, um, just the fine details, I mean, I am personally thinking that some of the reasons we're at forty, we're at forty kids for the high school maybe because some of these kids are choosing because they think it's gonna be like last spring, we need to make it really clear that that is not gonna be the case. Um, but I think, I think it, uh, the summary was great, now you're right, it's, it's time to get down to the nuts and bolts of it, so whenever you guys, like I said, I just didn't want you to feel like I had to write up this big fancy thing, you can just send bullet points because that's what we'll be translating, translating it into something really simple, like the summary that we posted on the webpage.
Julia, um, can they send some of that stuff to you, would you mind?
Absolutely, feel free, feel free to send it directly to me, that's absolutely fine.
Cool, because then you can put it into the format that you did there, did before, which was awesome. And then from there, Kayla and I can start putting it out on the Facebook, then we can start, you know, having some stuff mailed and stuff like that, but uh, you did a really fantastic job with the summary. So if you don't mind, uh, we don't wanna put extra work on you, but if you don't mind, help.
No, no, that's fine, feel free to send me, um, anything and I will, um, we'll just fine tune and add some more details and then I agree with your statement, it needs to go out in the mail, it needs to go on Facebook, it needs to go in the mail. We need to make sure that nobody can come back to us and say, I didn't know.
Right.
Um, so, and then, uh, when it's time, because we haven't had comments, I did have a couple of questions on Anne's summary, but I don't think we're there yet.
Can we have a deadline?
Oh, so we need to figure out what the deadline is and what is, I mean, we kinda need to figure what's gonna work best for you guys and, you know, Karen, if you wanna chime in, absolutely, because you know, you're fielding a lot of this, so we kinda need to figure out what that deadline's gonna be.
Um, so, uh, I'm not sure if you're asking me to, to give a deadline, I think that Anne and Joe need to, we probably need to talk about that. So I have mixed feelings, I feel like a lot of parents have been sort of holding out because they don't know. But I also think there's a lot coming in because they waited, they just didn't make a decision yet and now they're saying, oh, I guess it's time. But overall, I think parents under, are understanding, I do think after Friday's Zoom call, and we do that Friday night, um, word spreads pretty fast, so the, the the information we're gonna give is gonna be pretty clear about expectations and how it is gonna look different. So I think that's gonna give people the weekend to sit on it and think about it a little bit and I, that's two days and as we all know, things can word moves pretty fastly in a small community, so I, maybe, I, I think midweek next week, um, once those letters go out we should have a deadline of, uh, so, so the teachers can know what to expect in their classrooms for kids that are gonna be, there are some grades that are gonna have, you know, there's some classes that are gonna have seven or eight kids that are gonna be remote, so they, they need to plan for that before they, before their planning time happens on those four days, PD days. That's just my thought.
So the only caution I would say with midweek is if you're mailing on Monday.
Yeah, that was gonna be my point.
It's gonna get there and
Can we mail Friday or Saturday morning?
But if, if Anne and Joe are getting stuff to Julia on Friday, that gives Julia no time. So I think the mailing is reasonable for Monday, um, and certainly, you know, we might be able to do some stuff online sooner.
Right.
But the mailing's reasonable for, for, uh, Monday, but I think that you, the earliest might be the end of the week.
Friday, yeah.
Right, I would say Friday the twenty-eighth.
And I think that's, I think, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, and then when people come in on Monday, they'll know.
Right. I mean, is everybody okay with that? Alright, so we'll figure out a deadline for the twenty-eighth. Alright, Anne, you were going to, oh, Julia, you had more questions?
Yeah, I have some questions, uh, just about Anne's summary, if you don't mind. One, she mentioned the bus monitor, is that something that we, a position we would be hiring for or the bus company would be providing for a fee? Or is this something that is still kind of in the works, we're just talking about it? We've, we've talked about it in the house and we, um, I went to Mrs. Killily and I've talked to some para educators. Could we adjust their schedule? I know I have one pair of educators that would love to be able to come in early in the morning, do the bus and then maybe leave later in the afternoon so we're not adding hours to the schedule. I mean, I've been a bus monitor, we need to, I'll do it, I think it's, I think it's critically important for high school. Oh, I think it's a great idea, I just, right, I, I agree with you. I think we're, we're at the point where we're looking, we're looking to staff it ourselves. Okay. ourselves. Perfect, um, now, you mentioned also, I just kinda wrote a note, no, passing that some of the training was gonna happen during the two PD days before school started. I thought that we had moved school back to the eighth and there was gonna be a total of six days that the teachers were gonna be working on these things before the kids came back on the eighth of September.
Wayne, do you wanna? Yeah, so we have two groups, uh, we have the para group and they're coming back, typically they have one PD day. But, uh, this year we've agreed to two PD days, so they will have Wednesday the second and Thursday the third. The teacher group will have two days beginning next Wednesday and Thursday for PD district-wide, where we'll take uh, some of the issues that we are mandated to cover as well as, uh, some technology and social emotional learning, some of that. Then they have the following four days, which is the thirty-first of August, the first, the second, and the third of September, those four days. It's important they have a class list by then, so I'm glad the twenty-eighth would be the kind of drop dead date. So those days are in their classroom, we're not, I mean, we have only one or two IEPs scheduled for that week, we're, we changed everything to make room for teachers to prepare in their rooms for the students and to work on their remote learning plans, so uh, thankfully, everybody's agreed, I'd like to thank the board members who worked with us, I know Kayla and Sean worked with the teacher group, Holly and I with the para group, everyone was cordial, I mean, we didn't feel any, um, questions that I thought were, were not appropriate to the issue, so it was very professional. Uh, so we do have, so I think Julia may be thinking of the para group.
So we still, well, we still have the six days, so the teachers still have
No.
And we still have the PD, it's split into two days of PD, four days of, um, you know, them getting their stuff all together, so it's still six days and there's still PD. It's just laid out a little bit differently than we originally would.
I guess it was really, I, I felt like it was presented to us, um, that we needed to add these three days because we had so much PD that needed to be done. Now we're saying they get four days to set up their classroom and two days of PD. Uh, my understanding was there was a lot more PD that needed to happen, I'm not sure why they need four days and in, in the classrooms independently unless we're gonna be doing, you know, Zoom PD or something like that while they're in the classroom, I was just surprised by that comment.
Yeah, good.
Uh, some of the teachers during this process have said to me that they're worried about how they teach remotely at the same time they're teaching class. So I think the preparation time for them is gonna be more thorough, they're gonna have to really think through, how do I do this and get ready to shift to full remote should we need to, I think that's the thinking, we're not gonna teach the same way we taught before.
Right.
It's the same at the elementary school, right, because I was going on asynchronous that they need time to record things that are gonna be broadcast, uh, via Teams.
Oh, that's good, I just, I was concerned because it was presented, there was so much PD that needed to happen, that they needed to, we needed to do all these grief groups that there, that two days wasn't gonna be enough for that.
So what, um, cause I asked, actually asked that question on Monday when we were in our negotiation session, because we went down the list of PD. Um, and it was like, and I, so I asked the reps that were here, I'm like, that's a lot, you know, can you guys do that in two days? And the answer was, you know, it's, it's gonna be tight, we can do it, some of it we can do remotely, some of it we can do here, and they felt confident that they could do the PD that was gonna be required in the two days and they really were emphasizing that, uh, for them, those four days, um, you know, to have, not, it's really not just room setup, it's really collaborating and figuring out um, how this is all gonna work, you know, and I, and I asked them, um, I said, well, you know, when we sent the kids home early and we kept you guys, you know, the idea was that you guys would talk about how, you know, what didn't work in remote learning. Um, you know, how would we make it better? And they were able to do some of that, but unfortunately then, uh, they got sidetracked with some other stuff with like all of the uh, steering committee stuff, so they didn't get to do all of what we had intended initially.
Right.
Now they need to do a lot of that in that four days.
Okay, so that they are still gonna be working on, okay, that was my concern.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was so much stress about how much PD and how much, you know, like you said, we, we asked them to stay at the end of last year because we needed a fix, we needed to take the opportunity to do that learning and I heard, yeah, I was wondering if that was all gonna happen in two days or if some of this four days, they're gonna be still working out those kinks then.
Well, yeah, this, because they weren't, weren't able to do all the stuff that we hoped they'd be able to do, just because they got pulled to other duties.
Right, right, no, understood, understood, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so, so, and, you know, you can ask, you know, Wayne and Kayla, you know, my big thing was like, you, you, is that enough, can you guys do all that? And they felt confident, Kayla?
And they're, so they did the like bones of remote learning, but until you have your class list.
Right.
Kinda, it's, you know, theoretical, so they're getting class lists, they're going to kind, most of them will know the kids they're going to have and they can plan realistically versus, you know, in theory. And there were quite a few of the required trainings that could be done online, if I'm remembering correctly, like the
They could do some of it online.
Pathogen, that, some of them are very basic every year and they can do online, so it doesn't have to take up, you know, some of that valuable time.
Perfect, thank you, and I just wanted to make sure that we were getting all that in because I, I know when Karen made the presentation of the steering committee, there was a lot of time spent talking.
talking about how much PD needed to be done.
Yep.
And the last question I have is, was referring to the medical that we were going to have quarantine in the high school area in the nurses' office. Now, how many students can we fit in there with the cots and the sheets?
With two cots and two chairs, we, and the, we're going to have these vertical dividers that we ordered. We think we could possibly put four kids in there, depending on how symptomatic they are. And then the secondary location will be in the in-school suspension room. We've ordered a cot for that room. That does have a bathroom. The ventilation is not good. That room always stinks. Pardon me.
Well, that's one of the reasons I'm, first of all, I guess I'd make two points. If we have more than four kids quarantined at a time, then nobody's going to be in school. Do we really need to have this? But my other question is, the ISS room, I'm not sure, does it make medical sense to have a quarantine space that's carpeted?
No, that's why we, it's our backup room, because all of those spaces are carpeted in there.
Right, in there. That's why I wondered if we'd have to find another, right, if we'd have to find like another room that wasn't, because you can't, you know, pour bleach on it and sanitize it if you've got anybody in there ever.
Right, right.
Right, Anne, do you have?
The quarantine room has to be near the nurses' office. No IS scans or bus without it. If you read the miniature Nurses Association thing that I sent you out on Monday.
Yeah, no, I saw that. That's great. I just didn't know, I'm not familiar enough. I didn't know if there was another room back there. The carpeting was the only thing that.
Yeah, there's no other room, there's no other space available near that room. It does not have carpeting.
Right, that's, that's the only issue is how, you know, if you get somebody in there that you're concerned about, how do you sanitize that?
Put the 360 machine in there, that pretty much.
Right, that goes everywhere. Mrs. Fritag, you were, you had more, right?
Um, I think I'm good.
Okay.
I think I'm good. I'm glad with the date for next week, Friday, that'll be the endpoint. And I think we'll see how the Zoom goes this Friday night. I think Karen, Sean, Jo, and I, we're going to get together on Friday and kind of say, this is how we're going to do it. And back to the PD, again, we rethought through the PD. For instance, Tim Fleming was going to do the suicide prevention training. We're required to do two hours before April, I think. So we'll do it in a half-hour segments, and he's going to record it. He's going to do a video. He's working with Mr. Pike. And I think he's kind of excited about how he can create a video for suicide prevention training.
Cool.
Great.
So I think we're, we're rethinking everything on the PD.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Did anybody else have questions for Anne? Holly?
So, as Wayne said, you know, that was the parent leadership a couple times in the week that this morning. And two questions that came up are concerns, I guess. One is the backpack. So I think this is mostly the middle high school that, you know, the concern, one concern was that, about having them have the backpack right next to them because of maybe a contraband, you know, something that they might have in their locker, you know, whatever. And then normally, it's like, you know, stuff they shouldn't have on the stool. But you know, I mean, if it's right there, they gotta be quickly with the lost bag. And my only thought to that was, was I know in the athletic, you know, plans that Sam had where they put their bags like over by the bleachers or the fence or something, like either gym mat or, you know, their athletic bag. So I don't know if we could, like, and I know rooms are going to be tight because we have stuff spread out. But if there's any way to put like all in, like along the wall, or you know what I mean? I don't, I don't know. That was just a point that one of, one of the parent leadership brought up. The other question was, and I guess this is for both buildings, but that, so if a kid, you know, they, they do the temperature and they have a temperature, or you know, we get whatever system with the screening, and then they get sent to the nurse, and the nurse determines they need to go home, how are we handling with siblings? Like, if the sibling doesn't have a temperature, you know.
It's in the guidelines during that nurse's.
Okay, yeah. And I, I don't, I didn't get a chance to get, you know, hit it so much in memory. But there's that question. But then, so the other point is, they have, that they brought up a good point is, and I don't know how it works in power school. We kind of had that discussion that, you know, some people have siblings with different last names or people who are kind of living together, you know, like mom's boyfriend, and there's two different kids. Those last name kids provide in the same house, you know, pre-office. Like, just though we have all that on the record.
So we had that situation in summer school, and we aired on the side of caution rather than get, you know, caught up in things. We had the sibling stay away too until everything was turned up. Went away quickly, and it wasn't COVID. There was a COVID test done. So I think, you know, that's probably, we're going to be in the same place. Because somebody's got to take care of Joey. They got to take care of Lily, too. Somebody's going to be home with Joey, who has the temperature.
And then, so the nurses, or there's some way to know, like, which kids live together who you would never.
Well, there's a family thing in power school.
Okay, that's what I had thought.
And even if it's different names, if they're entered, I'm pretty sure, I'm not, I don't enter it, but.
Anne, you were going to say? Jean?
I don't know. I don't know. But, um, power school, if we could, we link families, we link people at the same address.
Okay, that's the same address. That's good, because then if they're not related at all, okay, yeah.
And we, and we, we will follow the, the school nurses' guidelines. And we're going to be, Jan, myself, and Elise are going to be giving PD to the support staff to answer all these questions.
Okay, cool.
The other question I had, well, you talked about map testing being done remotely, or those remotely. So how, how, you know, how, how would you be able to know if it's really the student doing it? I mean, how would you know with, with almost anything, but maps, I mean, the kids will be logged into a class and sitting there. But for map testing, is there, are you going to be watching them or?
Mrs. Tribuco, are you available to help with this question?
Can't see a video.
I'm sorry. I'm really, I'm really not able to help with that question because I'm, I'm not the assessment person anymore. And although I am doing some things with assessment, I've looked at nothing regarding remote testing because I am moving out of that role. So I'm uploading, I'm uploading the student, Kat and I talked about this. I'm uploading the student files, the roster files, and I'm getting that kind of stuff set. But as far as the proctoring and all that, I, I haven't read any of the materials. So I'm sorry that I can't help, but I can't.
Can I pipe in?
Absolutely.
So for Praxis, you're, it's just like you're Zooming and you are recorded, and it's the same type of deal. You can't, you don't get up, you can't have anything. You have to show your workspace. You cannot have anyone. They prefer no one even, I think, in the house, but no one in the room. So it's sort of the same ground rules. Obviously, there, it's a little different, but there are, there's someone proctoring remote also. So you're sitting there watching if they need to, I don't know how you handle bathroom because typically, like, the proctor goes pretty much with you. And so obviously, maybe you take.
Interesting.
No, they really, they go right to the door with you. But maybe they take the computer, leave it outside. I don't know how it works, but I think it's all video.
Wayne? I would just say that, that with maps, given that it's not high stakes, there's no grade relative to their, it's less likely that there will be corruption of, of information, but certainly possible. And the tests are fairly short, and I think like an hour and a half might be a whole English Language Arts battery. Same thing for math. I mean, so it's not like the state assessment or an SAT. These are fairly quick. They adjust to the students. So they usually keep the kid fairly well-focused. But there are opportunities to misrepresent your, but I don't think they'll be taken frequently.
Okay.
Okay.
These aren't the Praxis exams where they're not high stakes, you know, for the Praxis, that your teacher's license depends on that, right? For this, we're just trying to gauge where the student is academically. It shouldn't be that involved in, I don't want to be, to be diplomatic. These are not the most exciting things to do. I can't imagine anybody else volunteering to take that for the student. That's not what comes to mind. All right? We'll just get the data, and then we'll work with it to see where students are at. Usually, on the NWEA assessments, we can look and we can say that, you know, so-and-so had a low score, but they also spent 10 minutes on the test. So that might be an indication of comma check that they put in. That'd be the biggest thing I would be worried about.
Go ahead.
So, Anne, on, under the remote learning section in your report, and I'm just curious, it's like, you know, I have it on the board a long time, but I'm not a teacher. So I couldn't, I couldn't, I don't know if I can figure out. But I'm not quite sure what you're saying about lesson plan expectations. What exactly does that mean?
What we would like to do, and we talked about this in some of our training with Kat this last few days, was that the essential learnings for what lessons really need to focus on, it's the idea that less is more. So for instance, numbers and operations, there are a lot of essential learnings about that. Sending home a word puzzle is not essential. It's busy work. So we want to make sure that the quality of the work that teachers are asking kids to do really address those standards that we're trying kids to show mastery in. So I think in the four days of planning that they have, if we can't give them any of the message, it's got to be about quality, quality of your instruction and the quality of the work that kids are going to give to is going to be really important.
And then, but so they'll understand, like, what it, when you were telling them, you know, new things and stuff.
Right.
Exactly what it is to say.
Yes.
You feel, I'll give that to you.
Those terms, essential learnings, or priority standards, or power standards, those are all synonymous. And we used those last year when Karen Craig set up the roadmap for PLCs. That's one of the first things we did in opening days was to identify those essential learnings. What's the most important thing that kids should learn when they leave your class that they're still going to be using five years, 10 years? What's the most important thing? That's what you want to focus on.
I was more than sure about, you know, a lot of it is a lot of, excuse me, a lot extra, you know, work for everybody, you know, with the remote learning, after doing it in person.
Well, not really extra. It's, they've been established. It's focusing. It's being clear about what you're going to present.
Yeah, so my question, when I, when I read that, because like I said, I, you know, it was been years ago. That's how I kind of met my husband, is I was in education maybe for a little while, and I was like, oh, that's awesome. So, um, some of it, I do, you know, it was lesson plans. I don't know what, how they even do it in class now. But it is like more written stuff that they have to submit to the principal for every single something. They want to learn about, you know, lesson plan expectations on every assignment. I just.
Right. We, we don't collect lesson plans. We read them when we, if we're going to do an observation or your pre-observation meeting, you might have, what, what are we going to do? Let me see your lesson plan and talk about what are your objectives? Most teachers are very, very clear about it. They're posting them either on the whiteboard, the SMARTboard. So it's integrated into the live lesson. So the concern is, if I'm home, how do I know what I'm supposed to be learning? What's my objective? And we want to make sure that that's really communicated clearly from the teacher to the students. So they have a sense of, wow, I really learned something today. Instead of go home or stay home and say, nothing's happened in school. I didn't learn anything.
Because years ago, that was like the thing, where they would turn in lesson plans.
Yes, we don't, we have not collected them for some time.
Okay. Some schools do that.
Every week, some students do.
Right, that would be a lot, you know, more and above stuff. The other, yeah, so then the only other question I had was about the time of entry. So students may enter and go right to their advisory classroom at 7:30. And like right now, they don't go to the classroom until 7:45, and teachers are getting there like 7:30 or 7:35 if you look at the contract. But what time do teachers need to be there?
They, they need to be there at 7:29.
Oh, so everybody's getting there all at the same time into the same classroom?
No, I would, we have students being dropped off at our building at quarter or seven on a routine basis. Usually, we let them come sit in the office. I'll take them to cafeteria. In the past, we've asked teachers to do their cafeteria duty starting at 7:20. So that they're in there from 7:20 to 7:45. It's a 25-minute duty.
Yeah, that's one, one month.
I have no, I don't, I don't have an alternative way. If there's a better way to get kids into the building and still be separated and supervised and safe and regulated to learn, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking because I own my job, like, you know, if you have to be, get your desk ready to work, like, you can't just show up at that moment. So they're going to be like, responsible for kids at 7:30. And but then if we ask them to come in any earlier, you know.
So at the end of the day, and I, we have addressed this with union reps, at the end of the day, when your workday is done, we're not asking you to stay an additional 15, 20 minutes, even though the contract says stay 15 minutes after kids leave. I think if the buses leave and you're not racing your car out of the parking lot to chase the bus, I think, I think that we have to give teachers the end of the day if they're going to give us the beginning of the day.
So you're saying if I'm going to be a wash?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can project it that way. That, you know, that it's going to be, everybody, many hands make light, the work has always been my motto. And I don't, I'm not Amish or anything, but I think that's the perspective that we want to share with staff, that we're in this together. It's like when we positioned the pergola out in the courtyard. Everybody went out that day, and we all took a piece of that wood, and we lifted it, moved it around. And it took everybody to do that. No two people could have done it. This is going to be the same perspective. We have to do this together.
When we talked about it on, on Monday with the union, we went through a couple of different scenarios. So we looked at it from a couple of different angles. I don't think that we necessarily landed on anything that day because they were going to bring it back to the membership and go say, tell us, you know, what, what they, what they want to, you know, what are the teachers who want to do? Because that's something. And I mean, are we talking about that like later as part of negotiations? And are we publicly talking about that tonight?
So, I mean, certainly, at this point, it sounds like the union leadership was going to present that. And so I don't know an outcome of the conversation. You know, my assumption is that it's moving along and that they're okay with the not having the end of day, being able to leave as soon as students leave.
Because they were supposed to get back to you with what they talked about.
And we did, and we did talk about circumstances that were unique and trying to find ways that we could address those. If someone, let's say, as a student, had to drop off another school or a child. I mean, so there's some of those kinds of unique things where we're working together. But at this point, there'll be some minor adjustments, I'm sure, as we go. But I think we've got to start as far as time to begin and end. And I think we have the commitment of the group to do that. So I don't think there's anything to add in non-public other than if the position the board wanted us. But since we don't know what the reaction to that.
Right, yeah.
Which is why. That's why we held off.
If I remember correctly, they were supposed to get that information back to Wayne.
Well, I know we're meeting again September 1st, maybe.
We've got another date.
Right, we have another day.
So we could make a minor, we could make a quick adjustment prior to the.
And I only, I only asked it because, you know, Wayne, when we, we had, Sean and I, contract to go, or it was when we added, you know, the teachers gave us more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we brought that.
I think it was a big, you know, figuring it out, you know, kind of thing. If they gave us more time, we give them, you know, above. So, and a lot of it centered around this kind of thing. But going to make sure, I think it will be into the MOU, right?
Yep.
As long as it's in writing.
Yep.
And we selected the time 7:30 because we will have the additional bus run. So this is really about bus kids arriving because they're going to have the extra bus run to the bank to pick up the kids who come down from Depot and High Street, et cetera. So we, we do, we do know that these are going to be staggered admissions, but I can't leave kids standing outside.
Yeah.
Right. Does anyone else have any questions for Anne?
I have my kind of district line. All right, so basically, my remaining question is, so for children who are receiving packets, I'm wondering how they're going to receive instructions? Because if they don't have internet, they can't access video. So how are they being instructed? How are they accessing the curriculum?
Our backup plan is that the teacher will need to arrange tutoring. Our backup plan is that the teacher will need to arrange tutoring with that student. I think some of the work can be done somewhat independently, but I think that's why we need to be able to have appointments for tutoring during the school day when the teacher may have prep time. And again, if the student could come to the library, that back door, you said, that corner, work with the teacher and then leave. If not the teacher, then someone else. But I think they should have to come in for tutoring. We're not going to send someone into the home. But I do believe that that direct instruction is going to be critical. Now, some kids can talk over the phone. And we did some of that this summer with kids, get them on the phone and talk through an assignment or talk through a lesson, especially if they're using, for instance, big ideas. There's a lot of great, great materials that we can use and talk, talk through with kids. So that math program, I think, has been helpful for us.
So when we first started getting questions about that, my first question was to anybody that contacted me before we set up Karen Thompson is, do you have internet and do you have a solid broadband connection? It doesn't make sense to go remote without internet.
Right.
Being what I'm saying. So far, so far, I only talked to 13 families before Karen came on board with this, and they all say they have internet.
Because we could end up with someone who has a health reason not to be in building but doesn't have access to internet, so.
To a line.
Yeah, that's, you know, and coverage around here isn't great anyways. I know I, Sean, I drop calls occasionally randomly.
All the time.
So if I could just add, I know, I know that people are looking at some kind of a hotspot that looks like a thing they just plug into your laptop and purchasing those for kids who have to be remote and they, they need the internet access. And it's, it's got, you know, not everybody can use it. I guess it's user-specific. I know that Mrs. Fenrich and Mrs. Wallace were researching that. That's all I know about that. Maybe Mr. Uriel might know more because I think she was part of that conversation.
We're looking at, Patty has found a grant for us that we didn't know about, the amount of $5,000, that we might be able to purchase some hotspots. We're checking with Devin Justin. We found a device, but the device requires you to have a expensive plan with Verizon. So we're, we're still looking at devices. Some of the other things that have gone out is maybe, not what a district did. This was in McKeen Sentinel yesterday, what a district did somewhere, I can't remember exactly where, is they parked their buses around town, and those were hotspots.
I found that, that's very cool.
Yeah, so I mean, we are really looking into it. We have the $5,000, we still have some CARES money, we might be able to use some of that. The governor and the Fisher are really trying to get more broadband into the state. So we're just, we're doing the best we can with what we have. So those are just some of the ideas, and we should know within the next couple of weeks what, what we'll be able to do.
Anything else?
I have another question.
All right, let's do Holly, then Julia.
Perfect.
Mine's just quick. I know at the last meeting, we talked about as part of implementation, maybe having a trigger number of cases, like some districts have done. It's in the nurse's information.
So that, so I'm just going to interject because they keep bringing up that. That's a huge PDF with a ton of different lenses.
If you look, if you look at the end of it, Sean, where those columns are,
Yep.
you contact the HHS, and they will tell you what you need to do.
No, no, I don't think they'll get my question.
Right, so hold, let's hold on. So Holly's question is, at what point, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we're watching around or watching the cases, whatever, at what number do we go from one mode to another mode of instruction? Not, you know, and again, there was a lot of information in that, and it's great, but it was huge, so we kind of need a summation. You know what I mean? So, I'm sorry, so good to continue.
You're absolutely right. So that was my question, the different, different districts, I've been reading about how different levels, that they said, okay, this number of cases we're going to go. I mean, they, they just once just went like all in to hide, you know, like different step-down levels. No, we're in the heart, so aren't going to do that, but, you know, small and remote, you know, different levels. So I know that stuff with HHS, and we thought, I had seen this graphic too, about what to do, you know, when there's cases, and thank you for providing the band too. But I think it's just the overall, like.
You're looking at, you're looking at the benchmark numbers. When we hit this, we do this.
Yeah, when we hit this, we just go with it. Well, I can, so at least Dan and I will be next, next week during the TV time, and we'll, we'll get that back. Yeah, because we should communicate that, you know, the puzzle, the answer, whether they know too.
I think that has been a concern, like, at what point? And if there's a case in school, what is the plan? Is that immediate, remote?
No, it's, yeah, HHS might have that.
It's all, it's all in that plan. And if you go to the back.
But we can also have our own policy that says if there is X number.
Yeah, X number.
Right, and that's if we have a case.
If you go here and you look at these columns, it gives you, you know, what to do when you do this, what to do when you have this. And that's the thing that, that's why, you know, if you look at this over the next couple of days and come back with our question, the questions that you'd like answered, we will make sure they get answered. But if you use this as your guideline, then it might answer your question. And if it doesn't, please get back to us, and then we'll have, we'll get the answers for you.
And I think, if you guys, correct me if you disagree, the information we talked about earlier, that's more urgent, you'll get that out right away. But I think like benchmarks and stuff, I think that's okay to wait a little bit on. I mean, would you guys agree with that? I mean, yeah, I mean, I mean, not, not like forever, but I mean, like to get this stuff out, you know, like next week, but then, you know, even maybe at the end of the week or that weekend or whatever. Right, right. And that gives Ann time to have, you know, her meetings and get that, you know what I mean? And in the meantime, you know, we can review, you know, that section. And do any additional questions? Does that sound like a plan?
I think the numbers, I, parents are going to.
Oh, yeah, you know, I want to know.
I want to know too.
Right, so, Julia, you're next. You were done, right? Sorry, Julia, you're next.
I just had another quick question I jotted down a note from, from when Ann was speaking. I forgot to ask, apologize for that. I always look, I'm a little interested in the logic behind allowing open campus for seniors all year. You indicated that that would make life simpler for you, but I'm feeling like having more people coming and going in and out of the school throughout the day actually complicates matters, rather than having them report to school and we're responsible for them until 2:40 or whatever. I feel like that's adding a whole other layer of having to re-screen, having to, you know, report in, come to the office. So I'm just looking for some explanation about why, why open campus all year for seniors is something that you're, think is a great idea.
We offer open campus when seniors meet certain standards, good attendance, good grades, and good behavior. So some of our seniors are already on the National Honor Society. They automatically qualify, they don't have to stay for a study hall. They sign out, they sign in, they have a lot of responsibility. I think, I think in recognition of, of the good standing that some students have and the numbers that we have assigned to study hall, that's what the teacher's thinking was. We don't have to do it. It's not current practice, we don't have to change it, but it's a thought. And I, that's why.
I understood. I understood, and I know that there's, you know, that there are traditional ways that the seniors earn open campus, but we're very much not in a traditional school year. So I am just more, I'm more curious about having more activity in and out of the building by having these kids leave and come back, if that's not complicating matters and increasing risk. I don't know.
That's why I brought it to you, we have not made a decision on it yet. So I defer to your judgment.
Okay, so I have, I have two things that kind of, so I, one, I've had parents emailing questions. So I brought those. And Ann, you actually got copied on one of the emails, so you have like the nine out of 10 of the questions. And we covered just about all of these today, and I do want to go through them just to make sure I've got the right answers. But the other thing is, so in the stuff Joe was talking about and the stuff Ann was talking about, there were several things that you were asking, you know, can we do this, can we do that? Like the, like the half-day kindergarten and the open campus, stuff like that. Wayne, do we need to be voting on that? Do we need to be able to say, you guys, how, how are we handling those requests from the council?
So the half-day kindergarten is certainly the biggest change in the plan that was presented to you. So I think that a vote would be appropriate. It's, I don't like to call it half-day kindergarten, because it really is, it's a combination of students being in the building for half-day and then doing some work that would be in reference to their direct instruction, the other half-day. So we have a full-day kindergarten, it's a modification of that full-day kindergarten that Joe is proposing, and that we would, because that's, that definitely is taking off from the plan that was presented. Other than that, I think it's just part of the implementation. There will be adjustments, I don't think you need to vote on it that. But if there's a disagreement along the way, stop us, and you'll, you have a final call.
So what you're saying is, you know, basically for kindergarten, you actually want the true hybrid.
Right, and we'll call it a hybrid, yeah, yeah.
And kindergarten was included in our motion, giving. Yeah, it was one of the modifications with the motion to give Joe and the kindergarten teachers that option and let them decide.
If it's in the motion, it's already voted on. Joe, you can't.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I think it's in the best interest of the kids, and we will reevaluate at the end of October to, you know, be able to plan to see how they're doing, how they're adjusting, and hopefully, if possible, move them into the, into the full day.
Okay. Yeah, so, you already got the okay. Go ahead.
I'm not sure if you've talked about this at all. And it's like, it just came up to me. Is there any modifications to dress code besides the obvious face mask?
So we have agreed, although we don't have it in writing yet because we haven't heard back, but we've agreed that we would allow scrubs in some circumstances and jeans in some circumstances. So I'm definitely moving toward casual, but we don't have that articulated in the plan. It's just part of the report, you know, in regards to our exchange with the, it came to us as the representation of Hinsdale Federation of Teachers, that they felt that would be appropriate, and no one's objected so far. So I don't think, you know, we'll obviously fold it into the memorandum of understanding, but at present, I don't see a reason why we would say that those would be a problem for us.
And how about like in terms of students, is there any kind of specific?
We haven't talked about student dress code.
Well, the one thing we did mention was if, if we start getting custom masks, what's acceptable, because a mask is now something that we're wearing.
Oh, with a colored flag.
Exactly, what's acceptable, what's not. You know what I mean? So.
And spelling that out very clearly.
Exactly, so we did talk about that.
That's true.
Yeah.
And it would be part of dress code.
Exactly, exactly. Because obviously, you know, hey, be expressive, whatever, within this boundary.
But you put on a shirt, you can put on a mask, and it's not appropriate for your shirt.
Exactly. So now, Wayne, as far as like the energy request for open campus and, you know, Joe was talking about, you know, zero tolerance and stuff, they do that, we do that? I want to make sure that we're all the same.
I don't think you want to move each adjustment to the implementation plan as we go. We'd have to meet every other day.
And we're not going to, just saying.
I think if you see something you don't like, that's the opportunity to say, hold on. And if you decide as a majority you don't want that happening, then it won't happen. These are proposals that I think right now makes sense, but we're 20 days away from the first day, and in that 20 days, there'll probably be 20 or more adjustments to the implementation plan. As we get more information, more data, we get calls coming in, we get the nurse, you know, what we have for intel relative to nursing and health changes a little bit every day. So there's just a lot of moving parts. If there's anything major, we would meet, we're meeting on the 9th.
Yeah.
So we'd be only in school a day and a half if there were some things that you felt this just not working, and it was an issue, we could make some adjustments on that at that meeting.
You guys all good with that? Julia, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, awesome. I just want to make sure we're all staying in our lanes and, but doing our due diligence at the same time. So, all right. So I just have this list from parents, so if I could just go down this relatively quickly. I think we've gone over most of it. So the first question was basically, is kindergarten go back, kindergarten going back a half-day, and the sentence is going to be a half-in, half-out, so it would kind of be a full day, but the hybrid. Yes. All right, please write that down. All right. Then, what physical changes have occurred in the school to ensure the six feet social distance requirements? How we control this? So in restrooms, cafeteria, lights, hallway, easy to move a desk in a classroom, but there are other factors to consider. So we're doing the wayfinding. I mean, we have the physical movement with the furniture, and we're having the wayfinding. You know, so we have some ways that are two ways, that you stay here, and then some are up, you know, one way and all that, we have wayfinding.
And signage, you know, there are pictures more or less for the, we chose the CDC posters that are pictures for the elementary children as reminders, and things on the floor or the hallways.
Yep. And Joe, you had mentioned the, not zero tolerance, but you had mentioned the policy that if they can't social distance, they may have to go remote.
Yeah.
Same thing with the mask, if they refuse to wear a mask, they need to go home.
All right.
So I envision some defiance, I'll rip my mask off.
I'm sure there will be somebody, you know.
And it will be interesting.
Okay, so I know the plan is to eat in classrooms. Are you allowing the cafeteria use, or will it be, or will it be bring lunch from home? If they're allowing the cafeteria, will they extend lunch periods? Will they offer extra time to get back and forth, to get lunch and trays? How will that work? So we have, elementary school is going to be in classes, but you have multiple spaces.
Two points of sale, multiple spaces. And I think the first few days, we're not going to use the bell system. I think we have to feel our way through the day. How long do we need to, you know, give kids? We will give extra time for lunches, we will give extra time for changing classrooms. I think we're just going to have to feel our way, try it on for size and see how it works. I don't anticipate we're going to use the bell system, even though we have a bell schedule.
And, and in that building, there's, you know, there's a two points of sale, there's multiple places they're going to be eating.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right, so will there be screenings for all prior entry? Yes, because we're doing that in the building and on the buses. I don't see you writing too hard, I'm making this pen like fall apart. Well, I'm trying to keep track of a lot. Okay, so how, how will the school handle an illness of a staff member or student? Will that person, and anyone they come in contact with quarantine until a COVID test comes back negative? That's how it should be done to contain the virus, should that person be infected. So basically, we have screenings, we have the isolation rooms, and I'm sure most of the rest of the stuff is in that nursery.
And the contact tracing, I think is going to be important. That's why we're looking at, where do you sit on the bus, who are you here at lunch? What's the, what's the seating plan throughout the day?
All right. Yes. So will that require, be required at all times, adjust when they can't social distance? And it's all times, and the HHS, there'll be some fast breaks. How will the bus picks up and drop off be handled? How will you control social distance? We talked about that. So we're going to have, are we using tariffs in both?
Paris or, or somebody who will do it. I mean, in my building, we're using Paris.
Yeah, we're, we're not using tariffs.
And it's cameras. And there's cameras in yours.
I'm relying on the bus company, the driver to say, you gotta look at the belt.
And, and we're also going to have the survey thing with an COVID.
Yeah.
Yep. And then they're still being checked. We're using window seats. Multiple runs on the buses for the routes?
One of the buses will run back to the bank for pickup. So we'll do four runs. Normally, we just do three, but because, again, we won't know until we see actual numbers.
Right.
Maybe we won't need that additional run. Who knows? We don't know.
Let's see, what about PE class? How do you maintain, yeah, so what about PE class? How do you maintain social distancing in PE class?
Well, the gym is quite large. Phys ed classes tend to be larger than other classes because some of them in the middle school are 20 kids. The teachers had asked for that pre-COVID, that they like big groups of kids. But I think what it is, is going to be what kinds of activities are they doing? Are they going outside? Will they be able to do individual type activities? So there's going to be a lot of work with phys ed classes on that.
I think I mentioned, you know, Steve, at least for the fall, in good weather, is looking at outdoor activities. And the only real exception to, I would say, a large class is fourth grade, which is 16 kids in the gym. But that should, you know, still be able to maintain it in terms of physical distancing.
And you said that was special as our one month?
Yeah, we're going to go, we're going to combine November and December because there's
Yeah, we're out.
Sometimes so few days that when we get to that one, we'll be together. And then that little aisle about the same number of times to meet.
I think too, Sean said that, I mean, Sam said that there'd be an emphasis on skills versus competition.
That's more like, yeah.
Sports more than gym class.
Yeah.
But I mean, I.
I think it, it trickles down.
Right, I would assume there'd be like no, no, or less contact activities.
Yeah.
All right.
That was my assumption.
And how will drivers at class work? Any changes?
We're going to follow what we did this spring with the driver with two students in the car. Driver class will be held after school. And we've had some kids go elsewhere to take it. So we've been able to put kids on the waiting list to the class. I let the parents know that today. Driver ed is one of our more popular classes.
Yeah, I gotta get a kid signed up for that too. All right, then we already covered this too, but you know, if we start on site, we have the option as parents to pull our child from the school and move to remote learning if we feel things aren't going, going as we planned.
When parents ask me that, I'm saying yes. Anxiety is a real thing for many people and, you know, we want to work with folks.
In that direction, I concur. It's remote backend.
Right, exactly. That's, that's where it gets tough when you have a population you try to add to it. Yeah. All right, that's the only questions I had from parents. So that's good. I said, you got nine out of 10 of those probably didn't email, I think.
I did, and I called her up. I called that parent. We had a really good conversation and I sent her the link for the community nurses.
Okay.
In her job place, she's saying, what are we telling you the things they're doing there? And she was looking for nursing information.
All right, cool.
So it was, it was a good conversation. I think many people are still calling to ask about what's school like. And I'm saying, this is what we're doing. If you want, come in and walk around, see a room where the desks are six feet apart or four feet apart.
Yeah, I think that's something that you got, the communication.
Yeah, we're, so we're going to, so we're going to look at a couple of rooms tonight. And I am gonna, I am going to shoot a video so we can put it up. Yeah, it's good, yeah. Hopefully, if I got juice in a shirt, so yes.
And I have mine too.
Perfect, all right, cool. So that was all the questions that I had for this. Does anyone else have any questions for Joe or Kayla?
So I just had one on, so for the elementary school, I'm assuming furniture is having to come out. And I know Sean Lee had mentioned the possibility for getting storage pods or something. So is that able to happen?
So like I said today, I didn't get a chance to go back around, but we moved all, almost all the furniture. I think we still have preschool to work on. So we'll get a good look at it tomorrow morning and see how many things we have. But to me, it's likely that we're going to need storage because, you know, I just, I know we had at like two o'clock before I had some other things to do and it was crowded in the cafeteria. And I don't want to leave that stuff in the cafeteria. Even though we don't plan to use it as a meeting station. Not there.
And also books and manipulatives, are we, is that going to be, parents need to be providing any manipulative like stuff? Are we going to make, I know typically we provide like toolkits. Are we incorporating more into those or are we going to ask parents to buy stuff themselves?
Well, we have some lists from some grade levels if we needed to. And now I think it's likely that we would need to for kindergarten. So that will have to be something of the things that will be communicated to kindergarten. But basically, in the classroom, we're removing all, almost all non-essential things, you know, we have to, that's why we have so much things to store. We're just keeping the manipulatives that are absolutely necessary in the classroom. If we went to remote, because what happened with our computers, many of the children are going to need materials, but I think we decide on that. You know, if we see a hint of going to remote, then we'd have to get some more supplies or ask parents to be able to get the supplies. That, that eventuality. I don't think except for kindergarten that we need to do that right now.
That might be something helpful though, to let them know in the event, just so if, I know if I see something, I would rather grab it when it's there because if everyone is switching to remote, things disappear and you can't find what you need. So it might be a helpful.
And fails? And we'll do some comments afterwards. Wayne, do we need to take any other action on this or are we?
Good.
Good with that question?
Yeah.
All right, so if you're all good, then we'll be ready to move on to the bus contract. Yes? Right, right. Who is talking about the bus contract?
So Tom will address the bus contract. He's been working for months. In fact, I think he was working last spring with a consortium of other clients looking for service providers. And we, he's ironed out a contract that I, I'm comfortable. We've had some help in regards to looking over it as the consortium was able to contract an individual as a third party. So Tom, if you would address the bus contract, if you want to say in general, or then any more questions? We want a motion tonight if at all possible is, we're piling things up fast.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Agreement was reached on contract language. It closed the business on Monday. I came into the office and printed out copies and I think you might have hard copy now. And so I apologize since the agreement was just reached. I know that this is late in your receiving it and there's a lot of material there. But as I said, we did reach an agreement in the language. It's been reviewed by the consultant. It was reviewed by Matt Upton. It was a consortium process from the get-go. And so the base language of the contract has been looked over by business administrators and superintendents from many school districts in the area. I recommend the contract be accepted and I'm happy to answer any questions about its content.
So I guess, does anybody have any questions? Who do you want to start?
Are there any notable differences in this contract than in prior contracts?
Yes, many. Starting from the back page. There, there were, there were many, many requirements of the bus company put into the contract this time around because of concerns with past lack of satisfactory performance. So there are performance measures specified in there and there's recourse to the school district for holding back on payments relative to non-performance. There's also a tightening up of language generally. And there was a specification of the services involved that is a little more rigorous. There are all sorts of requirements in terms of the equipment and the driver performance and the, the GPS on the bus, the obligations of the, the bus company providing route planning with deadlines. And it just spells out a lot more requirements. The consequence of doing all of that, I think primarily where we specified, we want video recording on the bus with three cameras and the, the GPS system that will allow us to access where buses are and just be more aware of what's going on with the bus transportation. Increase the cost to the contractor a certain amount and I think that's reflected in the pricing as well as just the normal, hey, every time you negotiate a new contract, you gotta expect that costs have increased, costs of the bus drivers have increased, et cetera, et cetera. So while it is a substantial increase in cost, I think we estimated it at 16%. When we were going through the, months ago, through the review of the RFP and whatnot. It was certainly less than the second bidder's increase, which would have run us about 45% cost increase. And that's because first student is in the area, the other bidder is not in the area and they would have to fund their startup operations. So we, we picked the, the best option available to us at this time. And I'll answer any other questions.
Well, I think you answered my question. So I was gonna, I was looking at, you know, the annual, the annual class. And I was looking at, you know, the comparisons from year to year and it seemed like a bigger jump than usual. But as you said, there's, you know, we're looking for extra cameras, looking for more accountability and stuff like that. It's like, am I correct in that, understand that that's where those costs, that, that's where that bigger jump from year to year is coming into play?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so you're going to need that budget. Does anyone else have any, just, it's a, it's a seven year deal, is that what?
It's, it was a last minute modification. It's priced out for seven years. So we've got that fixed guaranteed pricing over that period of time. But we, the bus company asked us to make it a five-year deal with two, two, one-year renewals available on mutual agreement.
And because this was a consortium, would everybody have to agree to it or is it like a district by district?
Each, each district negotiated their own contracts and each district had some unique requirements. But we, we put together the RFP as a consortium with some base contract language that was then modified to the district needs from there.
So our options for year six and seven is still within our control?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
Do we pay if we're remote, fully remote?
Tom?
Yes, we pay at a reduced rate if we are fully remote. This is going to be a budget committee question for sure, Holly. And I just want everybody to understand that there is no incentive for any bus company to enter into a contract that says if the state closes you down like they did last spring, you don't have to pay us. Because the bus company has an investment in their business. They have, they have fixed costs, they have investment in the equipment. They have variable costs primarily in the salaries, payrolls that they run. And what districts, some districts that run their own bus operations might have been willing to say, we're going to furlough all of our drivers. But we're not in that situation. We're in a situation where we have a contract with a bus provider, an outside company. And we did not want them to furlough their drivers. We have drivers in Hinsdale that we're, we're familiar with. They do a good job for us. We have our own equipment that's not shared with other districts. We did not want to lose the opportunity to start up school again in the fall. And the same situation applies to, do we have to pay if we go remote? So what we negotiated and the board gave me authorization to negotiate with the company last spring when we did close down. We negotiated an eight percent discount. We paid them eight percent less for the months of April, May and June because they were not running the buses. They were available to us to run the buses with the equipment, with the drivers for any requests that we had for alternative duties. And the bus company was very good to work with. They came in and to many meetings and they were always available and willing and, and right upfront that they'd love to do whatever we needed them to do. The eight percent discount basically was an estimated cost of the fuel savings by not running the equipment. And the drivers were still getting paid and kept on salary and not furloughed. You think about the difficulty that we have as a school district to attract or hand retain some positions like paraprofessionals, where bus companies are faced with the same kind of issues with their drivers. And the drivers have quite a bit of training that they have to go through in order to get approved to be able to do that work. If the bus company were to lose the contingent of drivers that they have, we might say we want to begin bringing school, kids back to school September 8th. And the bus company may say, well, that's fine, but we can't provide bus service to you. And we may not be able to do it until Halloween or, you know, whatever. It takes them to get new drivers trained in place and be able to make those runs again. So that's why it is in both the interest of the school district and the bus company to not have a situation where if we go fully remote, the contract payments cease.
I wasn't suggesting that. I just wanted to know if that language was in here with the reduction, is the language in the contract?
It is, it is in there, Anne. Thank you for asking the question. And it does, it's actually tighter language now than it was before. This, this contract has us pay for a fixed cost annually for the fuel that the bus company estimates they're going to use. So we have locked in fixed pricing. And I'll tell you, the way that it was calculated is really in our favor. Year one is $4,000 for fuel cost for the year. The language on the reduction was tightened up so that the calculated amount of the reduction will be tied to the same kind of calculation that was used in the annual fuel cost calculation. So I think we're in good shape language wise there.
Do you want to know exactly where it is?
She's going to need to know.
Yeah, I can go through it later and find it, but if you, if you know the exact page, Bob, follow that. But if not, I'll look through and find it. And, you know, you and I aren't talking a lot right now for the budget anyway, so I'll let you know if I don't can't find it.
Sure, you bet. I can forward you emails where those things were discussed back and forth between me and the consultant and the bus company.
Yeah, anything that you think would be helpful. Thank you, Anne, for asking that. Thank you for the detailed reply. Because I'm just taking notes and then I can do listen to this again before I have a budget meeting next week, so.
Oh yeah, so, so yeah, if we can get this posted quickly afterwards, Holly can review. Did the other one? All right, awesome, cool.
Okay, so you're a little muted and when people change from one to another and speak. Just to confirm, you want me to send the emails to both Holly and Kayla?
No, just Holly. No, just Holly. Kayla wants nothing to do with it. So just, just Holly would be fine, Tom.
Alrighty.
I was just, I was acknowledging Kayla cause she had another ques- she had a question.
Just to follow up with that, is it in the contract that the buses will be available to us in the event that we do go fully remote and would like to use them?
Yes, it certainly is.
Any other questions for Tom? And Wayne, you said you needed a vote to accept?
We need it, we'll need a vote and we really would like to vote tonight. I think as far as being thorough and well-vetted by a number of people, I think Tom did a great job with this contract. Spent a lot of time into it. So I would hope the board, uh, would accept the, the contract. I'm confident that, that our interests are, are will be provided through this contract and I, I think it'd be a good idea to take it. I know it's a little late date and usually we want to sit on something for a while, but this, in this situation, I think we're ready to go.
All right, well, then I will entertain a motion. Right, we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion in a second to accept the bus contract, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Julia, yes, I'm, all right, so it's unanimous. Um, all right, so bus contract is done. All right, uh, review of the 2021 meeting schedules, did you guys have any issues with that?
Uh, one of them I actually did, I have to find it though. I think the town meeting day, was, is that Friday? Now I have to find that list. I do hear it. So that, the March date, I think.
It's the 13th, sorry.
Okay.
All right, so that's March 13th is town meeting day.
In November, um, the 11th, when you usually have a meeting is, um,
Veterans Day?
Veterans Day, so I moved it to the week before.
Okay, yeah, I saw that one.
All right, so we don't really need to take any action on that. Any other questions on that though? So we have reviewed, here's that grant.
Yes.
Go.
So I'm not exactly certain what number you're looking for, but I can give you what I have.
Okay, cool.
All right, and because some of the information is changing, some of, there's one other thing to change. Which one causes the total to be changed, but I'll go over that. So the grant amount was approximately $188,678. Special education was budgeted for about $40,000 in compensatory services. We haven't spent that money yet, but we know that's going to start coming out soon. For professional development, it says currently about $16,000, the actual number is closer to $24,000 when you include some of the, um, funds that are being included in the paycheck that will go out on 21st. Which means that the total number comes down to between 64 and 65,000 dollars. The 37,000 is the money that was spent on laptops. And we've spent approximately 22.5,000 on supplies. A lot of that has been cleaning supplies or other materials needed, you know, equipment needed to keep the schools sanitary. So I'm not sure what additional information you're looking for.
That just gives us a ballpark, you know, and we didn't have even that, so this is fantastic. You guys have any questions about it?
Um, just, is there any expected changes coming or additional costs that you're anticipating?
Professional development has kind of been ongoing, there's been talk possibly about allowing some teachers during the PD days, the four PD days that the teachers have asked for, that we might possibly allow some teachers to act as a resource for their colleagues with regards to technology. So we've said that it's possible that if one teacher spends two hours supporting their colleagues in their document, that we might give them the two hours, maybe knowing that they would need to do additional prep work for their own instruction. Uh, we could provide two hours of compensation for them. To make that a little bit easier, somehow felt like that might be equitable. If people are providing that service and supporting their colleagues for that time. For, uh, additional cleaning supplies, I know that Sean, that's really a Sean question, but I would anticipate that some of those supplies are going to be ongoing. Unless we end up on remote learning for an extended period of time and we don't need that. So that's, that's a question to get to be determined. And then the specialized compensatory services, we budgeted the 40,000. But what I noticed when I looked at the budget was that it did include social security or retirement. So it looks like if we might be a little bit under in the area of professional development, we might be slightly over possibly in compensatory services, but again, I'm doing the best I can to keep track of.
Something that's changing by the minute.
Right. Thank you, thank you for understanding my.
Absolutely, no, absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions for Kat? No, all right, we'll move on, uh, discussion of joint loss representation. Who wants to, Anne?
Include something in there from, uh, what I found on the internet that might explain the joint, the joint. When I put in an old copy from the sentence 2011, that we have a part of school board member on joint law. The joint law committee that the school board was involved with, more or less comes into the facility. The joint law committee can only have a certain number of members of management and a certain number of members from the two unions. So that's why the school board has not been on there because we need, you know, members of management on there and we need members of the unions. I think Tom can explain it also, and I think he did a good job of explaining it a number of years ago when this all happened.
I'll let you pick a lead on that if you want.
Hold on, I thought we just, um, but we talked about this with Matt after I brought it up and then I also, I made a note of it before that. And, um, one of the calls that I was listening to that, that they recommend especially during, like in general, having a board member on, but especially this time, you have a board member. So I hope we can make it work out, the board member. And Wayne and I talked about it a little bit today when we, after our parent meeting. That, um, you know, you know, I'll see if anybody wants to do it, but I'm, I'm fine to do it, I, you know, I'm, I have more flexibility in my schedule during the day to get into meetings and I, you know, so I, I'm, I'm with it.
So if, uh, the board was okay, uh, and if you chose a member, if Holly's the member, she can get here during the day. We would ask for a parent member and an HFT member and possibly, uh, maybe a district. But I think we want at least four, uh, on that committee and given the issue around the, the safe workplace, uh, we probably want to get that started relatively soon. Uh, I know that guidance we have is like a quarterly meeting and that might be post-COVID. We might go back to that kind of quarterly idea, but in the interim, interim, we would be doing something more frequent. Uh, and probably get something going fairly soon, if that was the will of the board.
Comments? Julia, anything?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
So I, and do we need that in the form of a motion or do we?
Well, I think you want to, as Holly, as you represented, probably want to, in the form of a motion, then refer back.
If I can make a motion to nominate Holly to be the board rep on joint loss.
All right, second, a motion in a second for Holly to represent board on joint loss. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, you got it. All right, so then we have a group of policies, first reading of policy, DGA, DK, EBC, JLCE, EBCG. And that is for a first reading. So does anyone want to make a motion to accept those as a first reading? I'll make that motion. Second? Motion in a second to accept the group policies, the first reading, now discussion. Kayla?
So the, we have EBCD, 11 and 12, I believe. So it is about communicable disease. And yeah, I just, it reads like, it says we can exclude a child for having AIDS or having a host of other diseases. So that just didn't, didn't read right to me.
Number one student, it is a policy of the district that sees the communicable diseases should not be excluded from attending school.
But in the policy itself, um,
oh, second paragraph, right?
I was gonna, I know, I don't know why I didn't highlight it, but it does say, oh, down at the bottom. Yeah, it says, as provided in this policy, determination as to inclusion or exclusion of students or employees with communicable diseases from school will take into account the education implications. And it kind of goes on, but it does sound like it provides a loophole that I'm not totally comfortable with. And if you look, it's adding other, so the original plan, I guess we already have a policy.
Yeah, we've had this policy for years.
Um, but, and it only addressed HIV and AIDS and this overlaps, but extends further and more specific. Yeah, so the current sample is more specific to like pandemic epidemics, which you would think would be more applicable. But they're going further and I just, I don't really like the loophole I think it provides. So that's just my piece.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion or want, do you want to, uh, pull this one aside and sell it legal or something or?
I mean, it's, right, it's from them.
I understand, I'm trying to give, trying to find out what Kayla wants to do.
I just, I don't, I guess I would, is there a way to find out like why? Can he, that would be helpful for me.
So Kayla, I need, if you could just show me exactly where you're talking to.
So the second paragraph.
Yep.
It says permits the exclusion from school of students who exhibit symptoms. So that second, that whole second paragraph kind of outlines the whole thing.
And just to clarify, in the last page, the superintendent is authorized to implement this policy through procedures or administrative directions will appear to be necessary. So that probably covers what you're doing, but I have a call in to that tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, just, I don't know, I guess the need for it is would be helpful. That was my only issue.
Okay, anything else? All right, motion on the floor as to accept this group policy in the first reading. Since there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Julia?
I think I need to abstain because I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I kind of feel like I shouldn't approve of something that.
Okay, so there's, uh, four yes and one abstention. All right, um, any other business to be conducted by the board, so the only thing that I have, well, it's actually a gift, it's two things, but, um, so I sent you guys the draft of the communication policy. For the communication plan, rather, definitely policy. I have gone over this with Anne and Wayne and incorporated their feedback. So I'm um, so anybody have any questions? Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wayne, do we need a motion to accept that?
I would, I'd have it in the motion minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept your communication plan report, book.
All right, motion in a second to accept the communication plan, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Julia. All right, and then the only thing I had, I guess we could do it, sorry, what, Kayla?
We didn't do, did we do the curriculum report, did I miss that?
No, we're doing, we're doing reports now.
Okay. I was panicking.
So we're on other, we're, we're on old business, which is any of us can give it. So, um, I do want to do that classroom tour, we can do it real quick, but I want, why don't we do it after all the reports, after such and such comments? And then we can come back if you need to upload, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause I don't want to leave and keep everybody waiting to come back.
That would be very strange.
Everybody okay with that? Totally. All right, so then we will do the classroom tour afterwards, uh, let's jump to the financial report, Tom.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have not included material, but I can give you an overview that I gave to Wayne earlier in the week in regards to year-end fund balance. Uh, the reason I didn't have anything to produce at this point is I'm working on the DOE 25. It usually takes me about four days to do that for a good solid days. And I've only been able to, to spring out about a day with all the stuff that's going on. Um, so I'll be working on it, I hope to get it done by Sunday. Um, it does have cover pages to it that need to be signed by a majority of board members and the superintendent. And I don't want to ask you to sign cover pages before I've provided you the document, answered questions and assured you that it's accurate. And I'm, I'm in pretty good shape on it and moving along quicker than, uh, a normal year. And so I, I'm pretty sure by the end of the weekend, I'll have something ready for you the first thing next week.
Awesome.
As far as year-end fund balance goes, um, looking back through my emails to read it to you. So I don't misquote a number for you. Okay, so, um, preliminary, this is preliminary, preliminary, June 30, 2020. The fund balance available to return against taxes looks like 130,853 and 69 pennies. That number is after we've set aside $75,000 that the voters committed for transfer to the building maintenance expendable trust fund. And 20,938.96 dollars assigned for year-end encumbrances. The year-end encumbrances included the lease for 120 laptop, laptops based on the tech plan. Uh, annual licensing for Microsoft software. Those are the big dollar items and there were a couple of small dollar items, $290 for toner refill order. And, um, $825 for a trombone that's funded by a mini grant where we already received the cash and it's in the general fund. So this encumbrance is just holding on to that until we can get the invoice processed and the bill paid. Those are the encumbrances totaling 20,938.96. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tom? Nope. Julia, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. All right, curriculum report. Curriculum report.
Thank you. So a lot of what I have in my report are things that.
That we've already gone over.
We've already gone over, Joe and Anne were very thorough. But I've been involved with FBL, checking in with both schools. And it's remarkable to hear that conversation about helping our adults be well-regulated so that they can regulate the students.
Yeah.
I think that's something that's been highlighted with both teams. So I think it's a really good sign to say that we're going to have a good start with our students. I've been working on the professional development offerings. That schedule has been modified now a few times. As we are working in on, you know, working on meeting the needs of our teachers and making sure that they have the time needed to work on their remote plans and to make sure that those remote plans are robust and that teachers are focused on those power standards, as Anne mentioned. And collaborating with Mr. Bogio, we're working on a plan to help our kids in PK and first grade, pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, who don't have internet access. We're thinking of possibly putting together backpacks with reading materials that we could send home, kind of, we're pulling the money from the field trip fund, because since it doesn't look like we're going to have field trips this year. If our students can't go on field trips, the idea would be to bring some enrichment and some learning to their homes, so to kind of bring the field trip to the kids. So if we have, let's say, 20 to 30 backpacks with educational materials, we could distribute some, let them stay at home for a couple of weeks, bring them back, let them stay in the school for a week, and send them out to another family. So that's part of the goal. I wasn't expecting to provide more information beyond anything related to opening of schools, so if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to provide you with the best answer that I have at the moment.
Does anyone have any questions for Kat?
No, I think we have gone through it.
So the only thing I want to add here, so we talked about pace. We talked about, you know, teachers digging deeper in performance assessment, so, you know, just so you know, and I think that you do, because you mentioned it here. We have done, you know, you have been working towards pace for a couple of years, you know, it kind of feel like we've been digging into performance assessment, and they should have been, and all this, and I know this has been taken a hiatus, although that wasn't really a board sanctioned hiatus per se, so we are trying to move that forward, and I know it's been really tough right now. Although it's kind of a catch 22, because I think if we were further along with it, some of the stuff we're doing might be a little bit easier. But we're not, so that's okay. I just don't want to lose sight that we are, we just want to move that.
So, one of the, the goals or one area for teachers to focus on during those four days is possibly to think about performance assessments that you could use, let's say, between November to March. I think those are some of the months when we're most likely to be out on remote learning.
Oh, cool, cool.
So providing some direction to teachers and some support with that, like, if you know that you've done something in the past, how are you going to adapt it so that you can use it in a remote learning environment?
I think that's actually a really good way to do it. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything? Cool. Didn't need to put you on the spot.
I know. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, principal reports, do we need to, you guys covered everything? I mean, I feel like we did, but, did I miss technology? Did I miss Deb? I did, I'm sorry, Deb.
I'm here.
I'm sorry, Deb, I'm so sorry, I missed you, we'll do you, technology report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me all?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, before I take any questions, I guess the beauty of the remote piece is, you all don't know what I'm doing here. And so, when the question was brought up about the NWA piece, you know, Kat and I are transitioning the roles, and, and so anyway, I don't know anything about the remote, but I, I looked it up. So to answer the question about remote on NWA, if I could, just to come back to that question, Holly. What it's, what I found was, it's similar to onsite, but there is a three-way communication, and that is the caregiver, the proctor, and the student. Whereas in school, it's just the proctor and the student. So in other words, you have to have the caregiver involved in helping to set up that testing time. And then there's a special communication platform that is used between proctor and student. And what they caution us is, that the data that is attained in remote testing should be used with, with a lot of caution, as far as making decisions, as a basis for high-stakes decision-making. So we have to be careful because of the, the things that you all were talking about regarding, I, I think it was about the praxis, was it, Kayla?
Yeah, that was just my only experience.
Right. So I think, you know, the, the concern is, you, you might want to use it to give you, get some kind of dipstick information about your students, but you sure don't want to use it as a way to use for like teacher evaluation or, or a basis for that. So that's the real quick stuff that I saw when I was sitting here behind the screen. You're welcome. So now, if you have any questions about my report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for Deb? Kayla?
I'm just hoping that there's an update about the laptops that is a little more hopeful than some of the other deadlines.
I wish I could be that way. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, I'm doing the best I can, and I just, this is just unbelievable. I wrote to my person yesterday, I said, you know, I have a board meeting tomorrow night and they're going to ask me this question. And I said, I'd like to have an idea, some type of plan, how are you going to, how this is going to be remedied? And I haven't heard back. So I said, talked to Wayne about it yesterday, and I said, you know, I'm hopeful. I'm, I'd like it to be here next week, but what I'm thinking is, if we could have it by the end of first quarter, I'll feel really good. If we have it before then, I'm going to feel excellent. But to think that we had 116 laptops with serial numbers all in one, this big, long email that was ours, and it didn't get here. It's pretty, pretty disheartening.
I can't believe they don't have to get those laptops to us.
Well, that's, you know, it's, right now, it's really such a cutthroat situation. I mean, you saw some of the backup material, what happened related to forced in child labor. So that's added to the, to an already pinched situation to get, to get things. So, you know, Lenovo is saying they want a, a four or five week turnaround time possibly in the US and Canada to get things up and running. So that's why I'm saying the end of first quarter, but the tact I'm taking with the vendors is, hey, we should be put at the head of the line, because, you know, my board approved this way back in June before some other people even were able to spend the money. So I'm trying, but, you know, you can't get blood from a stone, sorry.
No, Deb, I actually commend you for the steps you're taking, because I mean, there's, there's stuff that's like really totally out of your control. So, you know, so, you know, reading through all the stuff, it's like, well, I mean, you're on top of it. And I don't think you really have for anything more.
Yeah, you know, I, I was so, so excited in July, because I thought, we're going to do this, this is going to work, because I know if we come, you know, at that point, I wasn't sure what your decision was going to be, but I figured if we came back in, we would then have the time to train those kids, so that when we went back out, we'd be in a really good spot. I was so hopeful. But that's our reality, and I'm staying on top of it.
Kayla?
So I guess this is more for principals, or the, I guess really it's for Joe. Are the teachers aware of this, that they're not planning on having those laptops? And it's not affecting, you know, what they're planning to do instruction-wise?
Well, yeah. And to the extent that, you know, people aren't checking email regularly, it's summer. So I sent out an email yesterday afternoon, and only two people responded to it. But what we'll, what we'll do is, you know, we'll use the technology lab. And we'll have to schedule some time for cleaning. We'll use the tech lab to teach them the tools, to have them be familiar with teams as much as possible. And we'll use the library computers as much as we can for the younger kids to try and get them. You know, it's not as critical with them, anyway. But we'll get them all familiar with the team setting, and they'll see it in the classroom demonstrations. And when they arrive and are ready to go, then they'll be able to use them effectively, hopefully.
Anything else for Deb? Julia, do you have anything?
I'm coming. No, I'm good. I, I wasn't aware there was even a problem with the laptops.
Oh yeah, there was a, there was a big mishap, and yeah. But Deb is on top of it.
I like it, I'm sorry that we're having all that trouble, I'm just sorry to hear, I'm sorry everybody's have to go through that.
Well, I'm sure there's other things Deb would rather be doing.
Yep.
All right, if that's it, then I will thank you, Devin. Again, I apologize for initially missing you, my eyes are going cross-eyed, I think, so.
Totally understand, thank you.
Thanks. All right, so now principals report. I think we probably covered most of the stuff in your report, but if there's anything, we'll start with Anne, if you want to.
I have nothing to add.
Can I ask one question that I think that we missed, is I heard relax is full? Is that the case?
I heard relax was full for elementary, middle school, I know.
Yeah.
I mean, some courses for middle, high school.
Yes.
Right.
But they're not accepting any elementary students right now.
The commissioners called today said relax is closed.
Relax is closed, all right, so, so that was kind of a, you know, a piece of our puzzle, so I guess we need to kind of rethink that piece though. Okay, I was just curious about that. Joe, was there anything else?
Yeah, the only other thing Anne reminded me, when she mentioned her open house for sixth graders. We're going to do a, an open house, but it's going to provide closure. So kids that had Mrs. Snyder in kindergarten class last year will go and be a chance to say, you know, you know, thanks for all the work you did with my child, and go that way, so that'll be held outside. And it'll be held between 4:30 and 6:00 with three different cohorts, like a half an hour. Just to be able to provide some closure to last year.
So I know that with, looking at doing some trainings and stuff, I know that Karen is going to be online on Friday with some of the remote students. Are we planning any kind of Q and As for the parents in the different buildings, or anything like that?
We, when we talked about doing the Zoom on Friday, and Sean, Karen and I talked, Joe, we kind of caught up with, we anticipate there's going to be tons of questions, we're going to ask them, put them in the chat, so we can have another follow-up next week, and maybe another follow-up week after, I think people have lots of questions.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And so that's probably the easiest way for us to keep track of them. Now, I like how the commissioner has done it, he goes through his program, and then they go through the questions in the chat. Say, well, we'll, we'll look at that one next week. If there's something we can answer right on the spot, we will try to.
Okay.
But we're going to ask them, put them in the chat.
I hadn't really thought about doing like a, anything like that, but, I mean, we could definitely have to take part, but I do think offering tours will be helpful.
Yeah, I think so too. All right, does anyone else have anything for our principals? I think we have classes of them enough. But feel free to have some more if you want to. All right, so principals, and that brings us to the superintendent's report.
I think we've covered most of what we have, but I'm happy to answer any questions. A lot of people working very hard, a lot of moving parts, but I think the new teacher part yesterday, well, I'm glad we have nailed down our PD days, I didn't have that as of last week, so I'm glad the teachers actually added PD days, the way I look at it now, we have six PD days, and some of them are personalized more than in the past. And the most we've ever had that I can recall is four, so it's beginning of the year, so we added two there, and we added 50% to, more to the paras. The para day will be their IEP day, kind of where they review their caseload, you know, get to know their students' backgrounds. And then, but they'll have one day to meet with nurses, meet with principals, talk about protocols, you know, so I think we're in a better place than we were when I wrote the report over a week ago.
And are paras being notified of their new start date?
We notified them today. Yep, and I haven't got any negative, I haven't got any feedback on the fan if you did, but I think everybody's happy.
I had one para that said, what about paras? So, I mean, it was, and we put the teachers, the paras, and the base group. So we put all the information in one email for all of us.
Anyone else have questions for Wayne? Julia, anything?
Good, thank you.
All right, so finally, we're at citizens' permits, and we'll go in-house first, because you've been waiting so patiently.
I want to know those parents that didn't respond to the 17th deadline.
Yeah.
Because I could not make up my mind about my.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this first question is from my husband.
Okay.
Air quality in the building. I tried to explain to him, because I was in the building, but he asked me questions I had most clearly what he was asking about. So I know that there are districts around the country that have districts that really, where they would fit kids in, because of air quality. And so, I just want to give them an answer.
Wayne, do you want to address that?
So we, we do have a facilities committee meeting on Friday afternoon, and we'll be drilling down. But what we've done is replace the air handler filters, and it's not from a MERV 7 to 11, which doesn't mean a lot to me, but I do know that the air will have less access to carcinogens, particles, bacteria, virus than we hope. So we're filtering out more. Obviously, we're going to open up a lot of windows. We've also added some devices that will kill the old zone-type devices that kill anything that might reside overnight in a nurse's area, for example. I think after Friday, if you were to call me on Monday, I'd be able to give you a lot more information about the air purification. I just know it's, it's like, many times, like the hurricane, you know, where they, category five or category three, it doesn't mean that category five is 40% more than category three, it could be twice. And, and the way the air handling metric works, it's the same kind of thing. So MERV 11 is much, much better than MERV 7, where we work. So we have improved air quality in the rooms, plus we'll have fewer students in the room, so I think in that way, the air should be better.
Okay, all right.
It was one of the specific things that we actually.
Right, the eye wave, too.
Yep. Yeah.
Which is, kills airborne, you know, viruses and bacteria.
Recommendation from our facility manager to do that, so we took action.
I'll have to call you. And the other part is, I'm strongly going towards remote learning, but my child wants to study sport. Will she be able?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
All right, backup, she goes remote, will you give her the same laptop on which she has in the spring?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay.
The virus, if you get one case, what happens? I need to know this, because.
Absolutely.
Going from, there was one case in a part of the boys' school, that one case, they closed. They opened Monday, and they saw a closed case.
So I think, if I could just, just, because I know we have a lot that we've gone over, but that's an answer, we can't give you exactly yet, but here's what we agreed to. First of all, we have that the state will notify the district, and through their communication plan, all parents will know if we have a case, positive case of COVID in the school or anywhere in the community. It'll all be, it's going to be very transparent. What we haven't decided, and that. What we haven't decided and, and board member Kennedy brought that up tonight is the, the, the state will advise us as to close a classroom, a school, a district, but we can take a lower threshold. That's up to us. And we need to meet with our nurses. We need to get some more. So that we haven't, we're not there yet. And my thinking is on the ninth of September, that that would be one of the decisions the board would make. Because I think it will take us a little while to get there and we obviously are not going to open on the eighth if we have a case that we know of. So that, we, we really don't have an answer, but we are working hard on it. And I think that's the best we can give you right now.
I'm asking you because I have a sister that's been dealt with it. But a coworker and they shut her off at 10:00. One coworker and she had a test one day. And they sent her a coworker told her that she had it. She had to be tested two times on it because of context that she had before. So.
Absolutely.
I, you know, I told her, I said, she happens to have parents who are, at that age were, were vulnerable. And I have helped it too. I don't want to prove it in my house. Bring support.
Don't blame it.
So that sounds kind of.
You're welcome. Anne, do you want to go around?
Megan, do you have anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Karen, do you have anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Julie, do you have anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Sean, do you have anything?
I'm all, I'm all set. Thank you so much.
Okay, Donna. I know Donna can't talk because she doesn't have.
Can you hear me?
I can.
I'm all set. Thank you for asking.
Tom, do you have anything?
All set. Thank you very much.
Matt, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Deb, do you have anything?
All set. Thanks.
Sheila Clement, do you have anything?
I'm all set. I'm all set.
Thank you. Teresa, do you have anything? Teresa? She must be all set.
All right. So then we're going to go do our, our walk through those realms.